Welcome. Good evening, welcome to the Town Hall's Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, February 26, 2025. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start the evening with a roll call from my right to left.
Tom Wackowski.
Heather Sullivan.
Greg McPherson.
Butch Gannon.
Seth Davis.
First item on today's agenda is a correspondence from the Saco River Corridor Commission Application. Heather, do you want to read that?
I don't have a copy.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Is it just the first email?
No.
Oh, no, it's Southern Maine Planning.
SRCC, it's the...
Never mind, I'm looking at the wrong one.
I got it. So, this one says, "Good afternoon, please see the attached letter detailing the applications submitted to the Saco River Corridor Commission for review in February. Please let them know if we have any questions regarding the applications or if we would like to receive a hard copy." And the applications are two, I'm not going to read the intro and all that stuff. There are two permit applications. They are seeking amendments, or one's an amendment, an amendment for a permit to demolish an existing shed, put in a pool in a patio, put in an underground propane tank, and to now replace a portion of the residence and alter the configuration of the proposed features no closer than 390 feet from the normal high water line of the Saco River. And there is a street address there that I'm just gonna...
Yep.
The second one is an application, a permit to construct a single-family residence with accessory structures no closer than 450 feet from the normal high water line of the Saco River. And there is a petition seeking to redistrict a property from resource protection to limited residential district. I think we talked about that in our last meeting. We can get full copies of these applications. Saco River Corridor Commission has the authority before the planning board to approve or not approve anything that happens within a certain distance of the Saco River. And generally, what we do is we wait for them to make a decision. Unless we have questions, we let them kind of do what they do, and then the project may or may not come in front of us. That would be just based strictly on if they're in a resource protection zone, whatnot. So, I don't know, you know, generally, I tend to let these kind of like, "Thanks for the notice, I don't have anything to add," but of course, want the whole board to chime in if there's any concerns or if they want us to connect with Saco River Corridor Commission.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports. Bennett is Dwayne on Zoom for a CEO report. Hearing none. Mary, do you have a select board report?
We're just finishing up our trash contracts. We should finish them up this week on Friday, and then we'll be getting the snow contracts are due next week at our select board meeting. What else? The school board just announced, and it's going to be earlier this year for their budget review that they have at the high school every year. It's going to be on May 15th, which is really early for them. So, we've invited them to our select board meeting on April 16th. And I think that's it. Oh, we're working on budgets, so we should finish those up next week.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing for the three topics that we noticed for: affordable housing updates to the zoning ordinances, updates to definitions in the zoning ordinances, and floodplain management ordinances. Would anyone like to speak on one of those three topics?
For a second.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor of close the planning board meeting and open the public hearing?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. So move. Alright, first item in the public hearing is affordable housing updates to zoning ordinances. So, a quick overview, we had some feedback from legal that we needed to basically create an affordable housing development zone and allow affordable housing in parts of Hollis. Does anybody... And the zones that those are going to be in would be the Hollis Center Village Zone and the North Hollis Village Zone. And that would reduce the lot size if the dwelling was determined to fall under the Affordable Housing Development Regulations based on income. Is there anybody in the audience or in Zoom that has any public comment regarding? Hearing none. Next item would be updates to definitions of the zoning ordinance. So, these changes that we proposed are deletions of orphaned definitions that did not appear anywhere else in the zoning ordinance, or only circled back to uses and didn't fit anywhere. Is there anybody that is in the public or on Zoom that has any public comment for this item? Hearing none.
Motion to close the public hearing and reopen the planning board meeting.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, so move. Alright, so we're back in the planning board. Tonight, we have no old business. And the next item of business is the new business. First item is oppose nine-lot subdivision at Adirondack Drive. Andy Morrow from BH2M is here to...
Just explain.
Yep. So, Andy's here to present this to us. So, this is just the sketch plan review. So, no formal, no binding comments will be made tonight. That'll be once the application is in full review. This is kind of a first look at the project, and then kind of guide Andy to what is needed next when the full application is submitted. Looks like the full application's pretty complete from what I looked at it, and the fees have been paid. So, I think we're already there, but there might be a couple items we want to talk about.
Welcome back.
Great.
Andy, give it away.
Thank you. Andy Morrow, BH2M, civil engineer, here representing Joan in Forest Bradbury, who I thought were going to be here but are not this evening. So, they own a total of 67 acres. It's kind of an L-shaped parcel. They're looking to develop the southern portions of the site, approximately 24 acres is what they're looking to develop right now. The parcel does have some frontage over off of Deer Wander Road. What they're proposing right now is a nine-lot conventional subdivision, currently proposing the access as a private road off the extent, an extension of Adirondack Drive. We did do wetlands and vernal pools. Sebagot Technics did those. They did find a significant vernal pool. It's shown on Lot 8. The intent of our design is to keep out of that vernal pool setback. The way I've got it shown there is, the design that I've got in front of you is not impacting that. We did do some quick, kind of basic density calculations. It's shown on note number 13 on the plan you're looking at, showing that the 24 acres we've proposed can accommodate the nine lots. The applicant's preference is to come off of Adirondack Drive, but they certainly could come off of Dean Drive if the board had some opinion on that. We'd love to discuss that with the board this evening. The applicant does own kind of in a, this piece here is also owned by the applicant that has access off of Dean Drive. Sketch plan, as the board knows, is a great opportunity for us and the applicant to kind of present the board to you guys, but it's also a great opportunity for you guys to give us guidance before we've jumped into the design. So, we're happy to take any input or direction the board could give us this evening, and we will, we will take that to heart as we move into the design. With that, I'll throw it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Andy. So, the first thing I see is a comment from our fire chief
Okay.
about sprinklers.
Yep.
I don't know if you received this email or not. "Good afternoon, the application lists the use of residential sprinklers for fire suppression required, also to address fire protection. This application does not. American nation require additional, require residential sprinkler systems in residents in the subdivision."
Okay, you guys might have just missed that.
That was a, from Chief Young.
Yep, okay.
If it comes back with individual residential sprinkler systems, then it's nothing to talk about. That's the gold standard, so.
Okay.
And then I know some comments that the road commissioner made in the past about these hammerheads.
Yeah.
Is to kind of have no parking or deed those to the, you guys are going to keep this a private road?
Yeah.
Yep. So, I guess the problem that they've had in the past is people have used the turnarounds as parking.
Yep.
And then when the fire trucks go in there, or emergency vehicles go in there, they can't utilize the hammerhead. So, if there's a way we can address that.
Yep.
That'd be great. I know Rob, I know, yeah, Rob usually kind of has that comment on all of them.
Yep. I mean, we'd be happy to put some signs on there, "No parking," not that that's, you know, a big deterrent to people, but it's doing something that could be at least enforced.
Yep.
You know, if there's a car parked there and somebody could come out and say, "Well, there's no parking here."
Yeah, it's, sometimes that's all it takes, and sometimes, you know, we try it, I guess, at that point.
Right, yep.
So, what is, you know, the application, I think you guys said, you know, the road, and whether, you know, that the proposal is for it to come off of Adirondack?
Yes.
But there's, you know, potential to do something different. What, like, what drove you guys to think of different options?
So, it's kind of a unique piece. You've got frontage off of Adirondack and also frontage off of Dean Drive. So, there's multiple options there of where we could come in for access. We thought Adirondack made more sense. It was more kind of internal in the developable portions of this lot, which is why we went with Adirondack Drive.
Is Adirondack a town road?
I don't have that answer.
I believe it's a private way.
It is private.
Yeah.
And is it paved?
It's private way is.
I don't believe it's paved, no.
No, it's not paved.
No.
Private to private.
Is there an agreement with the existing development and the owners of the road to extend it down into this other development?
Into this one down here, you mean? The Dean Drive development?
No, off Adirondack.
I don't believe the, I don't believe we've talked to the owners on that street yet. That's certainly something we can do as we, as we move forward through this process, sure.
But you have a deed right of way.
Yes.
Yep, so they have a deed right of way.
Deed right of way to Bradbury, to this property.
Yep.
So legally, you have access.
Yeah.
What was the issue? Was it Shadborne Ridge? When the development down there, and then there was an issue with paving, and who's going to pave it? Who's not going to pave it? Something in there about, just vaguely remember.
If it's not a town road, it doesn't matter.
If it's not brought to public standards, to be adopted by the town, it can be gravel road.
Okay.
There was one that we required to have the first 50 feet paved because of, there was a waiver to change the grade from the road for the first 100 feet.
Correct.
That was a different scenario, but typically, if it's a private road, there is gravel road standards in the town halls.
Alright. I'll figure out exactly what it was about, because it was a, it was a large number to pave it.
Yep.
And they finally decided not to pave, not, they didn't have to pave the whole thing. I'm saying that's what it was written. I just couldn't remember. I knew there was something about that.
Yep.
Carry on, sorry.
I was down that road the other day. I don't know that I could identify that turnaround that's, that's shown on the previous subdivision. I mean, it's winter time and the road's on all that white. I think it's going to need some extensive work.
It is. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, especially the further you get, or the closer you get to this subdivision.
Right.
The condition of that road is, it's pretty rough.
Kind of non-existent.
Yeah, it's pretty rough. Yep.
Is Dean Drive a town road?
I don't know that answer.
I believe that's a private road as well, but, yeah.
I mean...
I don't see value in one way or the other.
Yeah.
That would make...
Would the paving layout change at all, if you came off Dean Drive versus off Adirondack?
A little, a little bit. Some of the discussions we've had with the applicant since we submitted to you guys was whether we may get rid of Lot 3, as it's shown on the plan in front of you. We're building basically this section of road here just to serve Lot 3, you know? Is it financially feasible to build that much road for one extra lot? Probably not. So, that, that lot may be reconfigured. So, if we were to go off Dean Drive, Lot 2 would be reconfigured to kind of get over to that side. So, yes, there would, the layout would definitely change.
If you get away with Lot 3, you could do a much better job on Lot 2, I think.
That would be correct, yeah.
That's kind of a
Yep.
flying lot, if you ask me.
Yep. Yeah, because that entire road down there would, would kind of disappear too. So, there'd be a lot more, a lot more room down there.
Right.
Yep.
I don't have any specific questions.
I was going to say, I have no preference. It's more whatever meets the town standards.
Yeah, as long as everything, you know, meets the town standards.
Okay.
Meeting the ordinance?
Road standards and ordinance, yes.
And they're not, you're not paving it?
Well, we have, we have...
We are currently proposing it as a private road, so yes.
Yeah, got it.
Correct, yep.
The hammerheads, I think in our regulations, it lists two different sizes of hammerheads. And I think we need to go with the larger size, the commercial size.
Yep.
I mean, the whole purpose of them is for a fire apparatus to be able to turn around. And if they can't, there's no sense in having it.
Yep, I agree. I'll make note of that.
And so, you're getting test pits for all the lots for potential septic location?
Correct.
The law date might be tricky.
Yeah.
But obviously, you know how you're doing, so.
Yep, we'll, we'll work through that.
Is there any, I mean, obviously, it's not in front of us now, but is there a planned unit for the remaining land to extend beyond Adirondack to the north?
It, so the applicant certainly owns a very large piece of land over there. I think the applicant has intentions at some point to develop that portion of the subdivision, but whether it would be access this way, or whether there, my first look at it, to give the board some perspective, here's, here's the entire parcel. So, we're talking about doing a subdivision here. He owns this entire other parcel where he lives over here as well. So, to me, it makes more sense to do, see kind of a
Back and off.
A horseshoe development over here. This is, you know, the least desirable portions of the site. So, whether they would connect through there, I don't know for sure. I think it probably makes sense to just come in off Deer Wander and do something different over there. But that is to be determined.
Yep. That's the...
Did we already touch on maintenance? Maintenance agreements and all that stuff?
It's not a...
For the first part of the road? Because you're taking, I understand they have deed right of way. If you're taking a first part of the road that sees, what, six, six, seven houses, and you're adding nine houses worth of traffic to that road, is there, what comes into play there, I guess?
Andy, is the deed, does the deed right of way have any maintenance agreement, once they start using that, or?
I can look into that. I don't know, right off the top of my head, whether it does or not. Certainly, our intention would be to, you know, work with the existing landowners and, you know, in the ideal scenario, in this case, there would be a revised road maintenance agreement that would incorporate everybody, the nine new lots, as well as the eight existing lots, and, and the duties get split up, you know?
Proportionally, yeah.
Proportionally for everybody that's on the road. So, that would be our preference, but how we work through that is, you know, going to depend on the butters and whatnot.
I feel like it'd be, I want to see, jump way too far forward, but not condition of approval, but something that shows that maintenance has been addressed and agreed upon, instead of just saying, you know, "Hope for the best." It gets at least the people that are already present, and I'm sure they'll show up in the public hearing, but the people that maintain the road already, at least some, at least a nod, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So, we'll just add it to the list.
Yep.
Can you, can you put the dimensions, the frontage dimensions on the lots?
Sure.
Just the, just the road dimension, just frontage.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
We have any other?
I guess this is a separate, this is a separate landowner doing this, so it's not an amendment to this previous stuff.
Correct, it's a new.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. But they have to, they're going to have to be some involvement up here for this road.
Yep. Any other comment for the sketch, sketch plan?
No, sir.
I don't know that, possibly this road, this is, I'm what, 10, 20 years old, this subdivision, I think.
Yep.
And maybe we might want some samples of that road to make sure that it was built accordingly.
I think we can rely on the road commissioner.
Would the road have to meet local town or town ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The, the existing road, if it doesn't meet ordinance now, you know, if it doesn't meet the criteria for a road.
That's not part of this applicant's property, though.
Yeah, see, no, that's, that's where I kind of get lost, is that...
It's private road to private road.
I understand, yeah. I understand it's private road to private road, but to disregard the first part of the private road because it's not part of the new private road is short sighted it.
Well, you're basically doubling, doubling the use of that portion of the road.
Right, exactly. And you know, we've already said that it's, or we already said it's a...
The ordinance actually directs.
Does it say?
We, yeah, we actually address it. Where a subdivision has access onto an existing substandard road below the standard set in Table 1212G, the developer shall, at no cost to the town, improve the existing roadway or intersection at least 50 feet beyond the access.
So, that's what was brought up. That's exactly what it was.
The board may require further improvement of the existing roadway to provide for public health, safety, and welfare.
Okay.
And then there's private road standards, right? And then there's private road standards right under that.
I think that's what I was thinking about with the Chadborne Ridge development.
So, so it sounds like, um, upon inspection by road commissioner, we may need to update the first, the last fifty feet of Adirondack Drive?
Yep.
Because, uh, once we get the final application, we can get Rob involved with that and...
Yeah, sounds great.
Or we can always welcome to, to discuss with them prior to submitting applications as well.
Okay.
Could they catch up?
Well, you know.
Any further discussions for sketch plan review?
I think there's a couple things we have to do as a board. We have to determine if it's, we have to say if it's major or minor.
Yep, so this is determined to be a major subdivision since there's more than five,
Five or more.
Five lots. Sketch plan should come through. We have a...
If we're gonna do a site, or a onsite inspection.
So within thirty days of approved sketch plan meeting, the board shall schedule a site walk and determine and inform the applicant if the required contour and fill to be included. Hold on, site's brought.
I don't think you can do a site walk out there until the ground gets clear, for sure.
Yep. We have the right to do a site walk.
That's a real mess down that road.
We have the right to do it when it comes in front of us for
Yep, exactly.
Preliminary, right?
I think it makes more sense to wait until the final plan because it sounds like it might, may change.
Yep.
Is there anything else you're looking for, Sandy, any?
No, you guys have been very helpful and gave us some...
You don't think there's, you don't have any, what is it, not exceptions, I'm not using the right word, waivers?
Waivers. I, I don't expect to have any waivers, um, but...
Good to know, just, of course, you can still have them if that happens.
Yeah. The way it's laid out now, I don't expect any, yeah.
Cool.
But yeah, you guys have been great. You gave us some good guidance, so I appreciate that.
I have no further comments.
I'm, I'm good.
Awesome. Thanks, Andy, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes.
See you soon.
Yes.
Alright.
Moving on. Next item of new business. We have a proposed solar array. Lauren Leclerc from Bracken Solar. This is another sketch plan review. So this is a major site plan review sketch plan. Lauren, you wanna kind of give us a brief overview?
Yes, sure, thank you. Um, I'm Lauren Leclerc from Flycatcher. Um, we are an environmental consulting, um, firm assisting Paddle Energy with, um, permitting and development of this site. Um, with me tonight, I have Rich Jordan, who is a senior developer from Paddle and is also the president of Flycatcher. Um, and Jake Freidenberg from Paddle is also here in attendance tonight. So I, we've brought a sketch plan, um, to you. It's the same one that we provided via email a couple of days ago. Um, so I'll just give like a really brief rundown of the project and then we can get into some more details. So as you mentioned, Greg, this is, um, the proposed Bracken Solar project. Um, it's looking to be about in the six to eight acre size range. Um, proposed to be located, um, to the north of Old Limerick Road, um, near the intersection with Plains Road and Kilik Pond Road. Um, it will be on a privately owned parcel of land. Um, we are here to get recommendations and feedback from you guys tonight on a proposed, the proposed sketch plan. Um, we've worked to minimize environmental resource impacts, uh, on the site. We have done wetland delineations, stream surveys, and vernal pool surveys on this parcel and designed it so as to not impact any of those resources. There also is a shoreline zone along the northern part of the property where Teddy Brook runs along. We're outside of that area as well. Um, we've worked to site, um, the project to minimize, um, visibility from the roads. Um, we have a proposed entrance to this solar facility off of Old Limerick Road and then an interconnection point here, um, near the intersection of Kilik Pond Road and Plains Road.
No, that's great, thank you. Yeah, no, nothing to add. I think Lauren said it, I mean, I think similar to what Andy's looking for. We appreciate the chance to come here. We're relatively early in the design process, but we're close enough that we think we could probably turn around and hopefully get in front of the next, the next meeting or the one after that.
Perfect.
Assuming, assuming, assuming we don't have to fundamentally wholesale change the project tonight. But, yeah, really looking for feedback. Um, we, I have not done a project in this town yet, so, um, looking forward to getting some feedback. And, and let us know what we know. Is there, is, what are the glaring things you're seeing? What are the things concerning, are there things concerning? We haven't yet spoken to fire chief. We haven't talked to road commissioner yet. We've talked to Dwayne, CEO, sat down with him. So we feel pretty good that we've met everything, but again, looking for some feedback.
Yeah, so, uh, first thing to jump out at me, typically, chief young doesn't require a knox box, or request a knox box on the property.
Sure.
Uh, at the gate. And then, just make sure you're looking at our, our six point three four, our solar farm's performance standards.
Yes, we have reviewed those.
Yeah, we, you know, require a fence that's eight feet tall and agents off the ground. Some cost estimates for decommissioning and hand construction. One question I had is, will the overhead power there sustain the energy coming from this system? Or is that gonna need to be upgraded as well? On Plains Road?
Uh, no, we're, we're not changing anything that's existing now. We're just, we're bringing new poles in to connect at that corner.
Okay, so there's no need to upgrade existing infrastructure?
I'm thinking, we have a few projects. Uh, so CMP is right now doing a facility study, which is sort of the preamble, the preamble to a full system study. And the facility study is looking, they think there may need to be some regulator upgrades. I think those are pole mounted, so...
Is, is there a three-phase power there now?
There is, right at the corner.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, but yeah, I think the only, there would be nothing wholesale, there would be nothing major. There's no major upgrades that we know of at the substation and I don't think they're requiring, like, they call it reconductoring, where they run new power lines from here all the way back. It doesn't seem like they're asking for that at this point.
Okay. Uh, it seems like you're staying out of the wetland setbacks, that's great. Those are the hot topics that I would look for first thing. Any other comments from anybody else?
Someone about upgrading the Old Limerick Road, that end of it, to their entrance?
Well, it's not gonna happen, nobody's gonna access it. Except for a service truck once in a while.
There's no, obviously, no, no building, no, no infrastructure besides the, the farm itself, so it won't be manned or...
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Uh, once it's constructed, probably four or five times a year, there'd be pickup trucks and the maintenance vehicles for mowing. Um, we look, we, we're working with Mr. McCrueby, the landowner. He owns the abutting parcel as well. His house is on that parcel, um, where it looks like a pit on the aerial. We're gonna use that side for construction entrance, um, so that most of the work will come in off that side, off, off
Okay.
Kilik, Kilik Pond Road. So that, the road on Old Limerick is gonna be primarily for maintenance work after it's constructed.
Okay, so heavy use will be on a road that's already pretty heavily used for construction vehicles, so...
Right, yeah, exactly. That's the plan. And it also allows us to have a loop in and out so that, that the, if we're bringing in panels and there are big, you know, box trucks, they can just drive through and drive right back out.
And you'll have provisions not to track a bunch of dirt, mud, carried on up onto the highway?
Yeah, we do need to get a, uh, we'll file a stormwater permit with the DEP and we do construction entrances. So whether it's riprap or rock or some kind of manufactured plastic thing, we always put something in there.
Yeah, that's part of building code as well, so...
Perfect. Yeah, I assume there'll be a, there'll be a condition.
Erosion control.
The roads cleaned, yep.
Yeah, and that's, that would fall under erosion control, so...
Who owns the property? Is that not listed on here?
Doesn't, they don't want to tell us right now.
Not there yet.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Seems like a pretty straightforward project as far as, as I see it, it looks like it.
What's the, uh, how long does it usually take to construct a project this size?
Probably six to eight months, once we, once we start. Clearing's gonna go quickly. Pines, um, sandy, it's dry. As Lauren said, we stayed out of sort of everything that leans off towards the burke in the back. So it's, once, once we get the trees down, it's gonna work pretty quick.
You said it was just under seven acres, is that the?
I think, I, the inside of the fence, we think is six to seven acres. We asked the engineer yesterday, but we didn't get an answer before today, so... I can't remember exactly.
A lot smaller than the forty-seven acres down the street.
Yes.
Kind of pales in comparison. So a much more minimal impacts.
Well, and frankly, very little, very little like road.
Right.
You did protect the, you know, from people from seeing it, from these roads. I mean, that's, that's minimal. And then, uh...
Yep. I don't have anything else. Seth?
Nothing.
Butch?
No, I'm good.
The easiest sketch plan I've ever...
Any question, any direct question you guys have for us that you...
No, I don't think so, thank you.
Awesome, yeah, thank you.
When you guys do submit your applications, make sure all fees are paid, uh, prior to, uh, when you submit that to get on the next agenda. Um, if you have any questions, reach out to the, the planning board email and we can kind of help you along if we need to.
Perfect.
Is it, is it stream, is Kilik Pond come across, uh, Kilik, uh, Kilik Brook come across anywhere there?
No.
Uh, the stream on the north side is Teddy Brook, or Teddy's Brook?
I'll look at it. I'm finding myself.
He's gonna go walk it.
I'm pretty sure it's called Teddy's Brook.
I think it, I think it borders the very, the very top of it.
So Kilik Pond is over here, it's on the other side of Kilik Pond.
I think it might change the names, Butch.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I've never heard of Teddy Brook.
I think it changes names between Kilik Pond and this end.
Mm-hmm.
I think it changes names.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't really...
I think it runs pretty close back in there, looking at the contours, but...
Yeah, so the northern property boundary is actually the stream. Um, and like Rich said, we, it's a pretty big slope down to the stream. Like, we won't be anywhere near that, um, because that is, um, in the shoreline zone as well.
And that's a good point, too. There's a really active snowmobile ATV trailer goes through there and they've got a bridge down across the pond, the stream down there. Uh, we're gonna reroute it just around the edge of our project. It's the same landowner around his abutting parcel, so we'll make sure we keep, maintain access down in there.
So you're gonna keep the snowmobile trails?
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, and the bridge won't be affected, so the, the route just will be, need to be readjusted outside of the, her right.
Make it a little more fun.
As the vice president of the halls honkers, I appreciate that.
Good. Good to know.
They didn't already know that.
What other title can I throw out there? Awesome, we appreciate it and, uh, look forward to your application coming in.
Excellent.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Alright, um, next item on new business. Use tables, definitions, and performance standards updates. So in your packet, you're gonna have a pretty extensive...
I found it here, pulled up, you're good, thank you.
You're gonna have a pretty extensive update, proposed update that, uh, spent some serious time on, on the off meetings to put together because it was more than we could handle in a, in a workshop.
So we thought we would pull together some ideas and then, um, present them to the board in hopes that we could move the process along. I think last time we tried to workshop, last week, our last meeting, it devolved very quickly into a, you know, what do we want the future to look like? So we thought maybe with some concrete updates to the zoning ordinances, uh, that we might get a little further along. So I will say that we did do the additional where we would like to potentially get this on to June warrant. So I added the proposed changes to the definition changes that we've already looked at. So you'll, we'll see them all in one document.
And then, the reason that I kind of wanna push for the June is there's some really great chances to boost business, small business in the town with this. It's something we've been wanting to do for a long time. And I think a lot of these changes will have an immediate impact, day one, to allow small business to grow or come into the town. I just don't think we can wait another six months to get this in the November warrant. So that's kind of why, I feel we need to, if we can. Obviously, it's not set in stone that we're gonna get this done before June, but, you know, the next two meetings. But if it's, um, if it's possible, it's, that's my goal. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at this since it was put out. And then tonight, we have Malia from Southern Planning Development. She has been nice enough to review our changes last minute, our extensive changes, and she put together this fourth, this three and a half page review summary. So I guess we need to start going through the changes. Malia, you kind of wanna go over your, your review process and what you came up with?
Yeah, so Jamelle and I kind of both took turns looking at the documents that you provided. Um, I did sort of a high-level overview of just sort of what are some questions to think about as we move forward with the updates. He did a really great job doing some specific line item comments. Um, I'm happy to kind of start in whatever direction you see fit, but I don't know if we wanna just go top to bottom or if we wanna look at specific sections or how you would like to steer the conversation, but...
So I was just saying, there's some things that we need to talk about that, that we didn't make changes to, but needed board input.
Okay, so maybe we start there?
I think that might make sense.
Do you have comments on those, from those work?
Um, yeah, I do. So the first thing is something that we've been, uh...
If we just...
You know, I'm gonna let you do it.
If we just do top to bottom, that way...
Yes, let's do top to bottom.
We're on the same page across the board. That way, we're not trying to overskip, skip something.
Yep.
I think that way we're not... I think that might be the, the best way. So, one point three four, just some reformatting. And the first real change is in one point five two, changing the dates of planning boards needed. Currently, it's within sixty and thirty days of the, the town meeting. The new poles is, is to have those prior to the, the town meeting. What we're finding with those dates is that it's actually after the select board signs the warrant, so the public can't put comment in before the select board signs the warrant. So get rid of those dates, that gives the planning board a little more flexibility. We can work on zoning ordinances all year long rather than two months right before the warrant. Next big change, one, uh, is one point seven, that was already discussed in the definitions. One, uh, two point one, just, um, cleanup of language along with a, a butter cleanup of language.
So we did, we did have a few additional, um, most of it is just cleanups, though, just making it a little more clear. I don't know if SMPDC had any specific comments on. That might be the way to go.
Yeah, so did you have any comments on definitions? I guess we'll start there.
I got it. Oh, it's right there. Yeah, so they had, the first one was commercial use. It said modify definition to include the following. Residential rental developments that include three units or more are considered a commercial land use. Um, that's something that we don't have in there now. I don't think we ever had.
I think that's state standard, is my, is that right?
To my knowledge, yeah.
The state law. Yeah, it's, it's the state subdivision, uh, state zoning ordinance language.
So state standards consider any rental with three or more units to be a commercial use?
Yes.
How would that affect the rest of our ordinance?
Um, I don't know that it would.
If it wouldn't affect anything in the ordinance, then why are we adding it? I guess that's my question. Besides saying it's just a, if it, if it doesn't change any Cs to Ps or anything in the use table or anything for building standards, because that's all set in stone from code and, and Hollis's zoning ordinance and performance standards. And if it doesn't change anything, why do we, do we, are we, is it just extra word soup? Is what I guess I'm, I'm wondering. I understand that the state has it in there. Has it in there somewhere. But I don't know if it affects anything in Hollis by having it or not having it. So it's, I'm not for or against it, but we're, we've just spent, I can't count how many hours, taking out extra words that were left over from... um, taking out extra words that were left over from not being cleaned up when things changed before, so I, I hate to add more stuff in, especially if it doesn't directly affect, you know, Hollis residents, ordinance, zoning, um, building code. You know, if, if we can find something, you know, somewhere where it's, it's very important, absolutely, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. Um, but I just don't, I, I couldn't find any um, anything that it relates to or anything that it would change by adding it, um, so I just, that's kind of where I fell on that commercial use part. But yeah, if anybody has any comments.
Just off the cuff, I'm just thinking, so you've got dwelling multifamily as a permitted use in some places, but then that's saying if you're renting out to less than three, but if it was a multifamily dwelling where they're renting out to multiple tenants, then you might be considering it as a commercial land use and then the standard would be different, um, per zone.
So if, if you look at our conditional use in site planner review requirements, seven point two two, uh, single and two family dwelling units are exempt. So once it hits three, they fall under condition.
Okay.
So I think that kind of covers what you're, what you're trying to say.
Okay, so then we may be fine then.
So it sounds like. Uh, and the next thing, any other comment on that? Does that make sense?
Butch, what do you think?
So we're gonna keep it as it is?
That was one of Jamelle's comments, I can ask him tomorrow if he's got a little more context on his thought behind that.
Just if, yeah, if there's like, anything that says, hey, this is, no, this, you're missing this, this is why it needs to be in there.
Then family was the next recommendation from SMPDC. So what we have proposed is one or more persons living as a household unit. What they're suggesting is one or more persons occupying a premises and living as a single housekeeping unit as distinguished from a group occupying boarding houses, lodging houses, or hotel. Such unit shall not exceed five persons not related by blood or marriage.
So that's how. I'm just gonna say that's how, I, I, I'm limiting anybody's amount of family they can have, I know I've.
Well, it's people that aren't, it's saying, it's saying you're a household unit if there's five people who are unrelated. It's like, it's not saying what size a family can be.
So I can't have six people that are unrelated living with me?
Correct, that's what it's saying.
That's what, no, I'm, I'm.
Yep, I heard.
Butch and Seth, how do you feel?
What's the, uh, what's the purpose of having, of a family unit? What's the purpose of having this definition in there?
So if you saw a three unit building, uh, it would be one family unit for each.
I think a lot of it's to protect the town, really.
So if I want, if I had a dwelling that I wanted to have six people living in.
So if you, if you look at the definition of dwelling unit, which is then used in dwelling multifamily, dwelling, single family, uh, family is living, you know, a dwelling unit is a family, a living quarters for one family. So that's when that family definition comes into, into play.
So we don't need to call it a family, we can just call it a group of people living together.
Right, but the definition is for family, so.
Well, that's not a group of people living together.
That's just our definition for dwelling unit, if we don't, so we can accomplish the same thing by keeping it how we have it and you don't need to be blood related at six or more. Or we go to the states and at six or more, you have to be blood related. I guess that's kind of the, the gray area. I know in the past, the board has been pretty consistent with not wanting the blood relation.
Yep.
So the risk, I think that we, so with the proposed changes, so nothing in our ordinance limited it to six people or five people anyway, so we, we've never done that. Um, I think what I was just trying, the, or the proposed edits to, um, the, the, the initial proposed edits were just to simplify it, one or more persons living as a household unit. You get to define what a household unit is for, for you, I get to define it for me. Um, and then I think this, the, you know, the potential changes kind of put a little bit more definition to it. So it's saying it's this size group of people that aren't blood related.
And then I guess to contradict itself, I think one of the comments from SMPDC was how is the code enforcement gonna, uh, enforce some of these things? So then I guess how they're gonna enforce it, then we add more restrictions on what they have to enforce, is kind of left hand not talking to the right. So I guess with that, I'm personally good without having it being blood related, but I guess Seth, what do you think?
I'm good without it being blood related.
Okay, so we appreciate the comment, but we'll.
I'd say, it's not personal. We're just gonna.
This is one that we've gone round and round.
Uh, next one is.
Because what really constitutes a family?
That's a great.
Group of people living together in unison.
Hundred percent.
Um.
Yeah.
So with that said, the next thing we have, that was an addition, was farm stand. We didn't have a farm stand definition or use in our ordinance, so we added farm stand. Uh, since we think that's pretty, you know, uh, critical for this town. A structure or area utilized for the retail sale of agricultural products directly to consumers. You guys can read that on your own, I don't feel like I need to read all these, I'll run out of my voice rather quickly.
You wanna go through the, keep going through the suggested?
Uh, I was gonna go until I hit the next one.
Okay, yeah, sorry, carry on.
Um, next things on this page are just some deletions of old stuff that we already talked about. Next big change we have is food establishments. Uh, now we have, we proposed food service establish- establishments, which would be a um, commercial use or premises and or buildings to prepare and serve food beverages to the public. And we have a food service establishment mobile, which would be a commercial use premise of a motor vehicle, utility trailer, or pu- push car that is licensed to operate in public roads to prepare food and service beverages to the public.
So we had already swapped over our definitions from, um, restaurant, takeout, dine-in, et cetera, over to the more widely used food service establishment. Um, so it was a matter of working that in as uses and again, updating definitions to reflect the appropriate, um, things they're trying to describe.
So then SMPDC had a recommendation to consider adding a definition use category for food service establishment, drive-through services.
Can I, yeah. So the reason why we didn't put food service establishment drive-throughs is because there's other uses that use drive-throughs. So you could have a bank and that has a drive-through, and we wanted to make sure that the drive-throughs, the drive-throughs, uh, performance standards were met by all drive-throughs, not just food service drive-throughs. So we, to me, it's, um, it's not an, it's not another use necessarily, but it's like, if you have a drive-through, you've gotta follow the drive-through. Um, which then would, I think, make it so that we wouldn't need to make food service establishments drive-through its own thing.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to make sure that like a Dunkin versus a sit-down restaurant, like.
Yeah, well, if Dunkin has a drive-through and, and the other restaurant has a drive-through, then they both have to follow the drive-through. That's how I looked at it.
Sofias in Cornish was one that came up, um, as a sit-down restaurant, traditional sit-down, you know, dine-in restaurant um, that also just happened to have a drive-through.
Standish House of Pizza.
Standish House of Pizza, so there's a lot of local, um, does it, a number, more, more than anywhere else.
Plus, I hope the cannabis dispensaries will be able to do drive-throughs soon, so.
You know. There was a reason we left it out, it's cause we wanted that to apply to a lot of different potential items, not just food establishments. And that seemed like, uh, like a way to have it applied to a lot of things and also food establishments. So it's, it's an addition to, not exclusion, exclusionary. Um, next thing we had was fuel station, we had a lot of different, and we'll get to the use table in a, in a few minutes, hopefully. Um, we had a lot of uses and the use table had fuel station, less than three pumps, more than, and it was just a mess.
Fuel five guys at a time and yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, we cut that down and just made a fuel station. Um, it's no longer, you know, depending on size, it's, it, it is what it is and no matter what the size. Now then we have function hall is another addition.
We had a project come to us a couple of years ago, um, and we didn't have a use for, um, you know, potential wedding venue. Um, that's, and so we, you know, we figured when we saw the opportunity here that we should add something um, that would allow for a use like that.
It's becoming more and more common, you see them everywhere, I think I went to two last year where it was an old barn um, on a hundred acre farm repurposed into a, you know, a wedding venue. Um, there were, they had very strict rules posted, so I'm sure that we can come up with something that's, you know, act accommodates the use but respects the, um, the residents and, and stuff around it.
It would be a public gathering and that's addressed in, uh.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be private.
It would be for the gathering of, of public.
Yes, yeah.
So yeah, we had to turn down, you know, turn, turn away a business that was gonna come to Hollis.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just saying that, that, uh, uh, life safety one-on-one, I don't know if you're using that or not, talks about, uh, assembly places and there's requirements, so that'd be, you know, recover.
Still needs to fall under building code, correct.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, next, next item we have is funeral, funeral establishment. I believe we had that in a use, but not in a definition, so we, we added the definition. Cause we had, some of these are, we had uses already, but not definitions, some we had definitions, but not uses. There was a lot of cross-referencing, that's where, that's where ninety percent of these are coming from. Uh, healthcare facility is same thing. Horticulture was another one, we had uses for, no definition. Ice cream truck.
So we had a, when we were talking about mobile food units, we had, um, Tom and I actually had a little bit of a debate over, does ice cream truck qualify as a mobile food unit? So we decided that probably just defining it might be, rather than having this conversation over and over again.
And then the stuff.
But a ice cream truck is a mobile food unit.
Not according to our definition.
So according to state law and, and our definition, we, we tried to, I tried to find as much from already existing ordinance, already existing state law and rules and the food service stuff and kind of just click and drag stuff instead of trying to recreate from scratch. Um, it's a lot easier. So, oh, some of the ice cream truck stuff was pulled directly from state or, or towns that surround us um, where they, um, purposely exempted ice cream truck from certain things or defined in a very, s- very, very specific specific way, um.
So we did not add ice cream truck to the use table.
Because it's not, cause you can just.
Okay, wouldn't it be just permitted everywhere then?
Yeah, but that's not, you don't want to put on.
Okay.
It's not, it's not technically a use.
We have ice cream truck in town that delivers other than ice cream.
No, we're talking about the, well, what, if it only delivers ice cream and candy and drinks, all, everything prepackaged, then it falls into the ice cream truck, if it's, if it's got something.
A vehicle utilized to sell prepackaged ice cream, frozen dairy, other frozen water-based food items and prepackaged beverages without a permanent location.
Okay, what about pizza? Should I cover someone else?
That'd be a.
That'd be mobile food establishment, you have to follow the state food rules.
Yep.
Yep. Uh, improvement guarantee is the next item, we took that from our attorney. Uh, liquor manufacturer, so we've had some talks with people looking for breweries in town. This would allow that.
Would also allow.
Wineries, uh, distilleries.
That's why we didn't go with just brewery, we thought any kind of, um, distilled spirits on a, you know, on a certain scale, of course, all these things have to come in front of planning board anyway.
Yeah, these are all.
It's an opportunity, you know, we see these things.
Good because it opens up business.
That's.
That's the whole goal of everything that's in front of you is business friendly.
I think actually someone said on the Hollis, um, Facebook page, they said my such-and-such tried to open a brewery in Hollis and it wasn't in the zoning ordinance, so they couldn't do it, so they did it down in Waterboro. So we lost one, you know, that's, that's what we, that's what we were thinking when we put it in there.
Um, next thing, delete mental exploration wasn't used. Mixed commercial use, um, we deleted the combined under one ownership management plan enveloped as a plant whole according to comprehensive and detailed site business building plan. Uh, intent to that was we wanted to be able to have two independent businesses be in the same building.
So you build a building, yeah, you have a, an electrician, brands half of it and a, and a.
Over Ralton's the other half, please.
Um, just one question.
Yeah.
Uh, on the SMPDC, it talks about manufactured housing, we kind of skipped over that?
No, it's actually coming, oh, yeah, in here, it's actually behind, yeah.
Oh, I was going to, mobile homeless, kind of tied together in my eyes, I guess. Um, so, I guess backing up a little bit.
State standard and what we already had.
Okay, so I guess.
So it's just that, well, manufactured housing, that's where.
Housing, so manufactured, so back up to manufactured housing. Uh, dwelling unit, structured, uh.
Has to do with the date.
Yep.
Before and after.
I like, I, I like SMPDC's suggestion, I think it's cleaner.
Okay. Anybody have any comment on that? Is there, where did, is that from the state, Malina?
I think, yeah, I think he pulled that from just, um, like, state language.
No, what we have in there is the state language.
Okay.
So this is not.
I'll ask Jamelle where he pulled that from then.
Okay.
So this would also allow us to delete mobile homes, cause it's also referred to as mobile homes. But don't we have mobile home parks and manufactured home?
We, yeah, so manufactured housing, it, it's, it is complicated. Um, do we, I guess one question is, do we as a board consider, consider manufactured housing with, let's just, let's just use the definition as SMPDC provided, because I think that is a cleaner definition, easier to, easier for Dwayne. Um, do we consider that to be the same as mobile home or mobile home to fall into that, or do they need to be separate? And then if mobile home is no longer a definition, then I think we should change from mobile home parks to manufactured housing parks.
I, I kind of wonder why we had two in the first place.
I think it's because of manufactured housing, you can have, so a mobile home, I think there was a ti- time at some point in time where that, those two things started to become a little bit different, where people started putting manufactured homes on lots, not in a park.
Yep, cause it.
Does that make sense, Butch? Does that sound?
Well, I'm, I'm reading this part here and it talks about, uh, they're built on a permanent chassis and designed to be used as dwellings with or without permanent foundations. Manufactured houses are built on a transportable frame and they're, and they're built to set on a foundation when they get to their site.
Wouldn't that be considered though a modular home?
We don't use that term?
We have.
It's right in here. It's.
Oh, sorry.
We don't have a modular home park though, cause those would just be a subdivision.
Well, no, mod, there's there are houses that are built on removable chassis and those are kind of modular homes.
Right.
Manufactured homes, modular homes.
Yeah, but those would fall under this because these have, these are built on a permanent chassis.
So the difference between, if I'm correct, a mobile home is not built on a per- is.
Is on a permanent chassis.
And, and it doesn't need a foundation.
It doesn't, correct.
Okay, so we, I think we do still need to have two separate.
Manufactured housing is also saying does not need a foundation.
Got it.
But a modular home does.
But why do we need a modular home definition? We don't have modular home parks, we have manufactured housing.
It wouldn't be a park, for instance.
You could put a.
Let me give you a, for instance, we lived in Ocean Park, we inherited the family cottage, we bulldozed that sucker. We went up to Oxford and had a four-unit modular
Yep.
built on a foundation, you know, they built the four boxes, brought them in on a crane, dropped them down, that's a modular home, but it wasn't in a park, it was in a residential area.
That's not a manufactured house?
No, that's a modular home.
Well, I mean, could we?
It's just, it's, it's just semantics, modular manufacturing.
Well, we have no, I guess my point is we have no reason to have a modular home, cause it follows all of the building codes. You can use it as a single family still.
Right.
You can run it in a subdivision.
So you would just consider a modular home a single family home?
Would you consider it a manufactured home?
No, no, according to this, no, it not be manufactured housing.
Well, according to this, it is, under the definition of manufactured housing.
There's manufactured homes and there's stick-built homes on site.
Creepers, I didn't see this coming.
So six point twelve says manufactured housing in mobile home parks. And there's a lot of, um, stan- uh, uh, standards that talk about manufactured housing. So you just, we wanna make sure that we're clear.
If we change one thing, it's gonna.
Right, so this.
Where are we going?
Here, six point twelve.
What is the downside of, of leaving it mostly alone?
Well, I just wanna make sure that if someone buys a lot and they go on up and they have a modular home built, that there's no issue with having a foundation put in and dropping four boxes, two and two.
Six point twelve point four A is manufactured housing not in a mobile home park shall meet all of the requirements of this ordinance for a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
Oh, perfect.
Any addition to manufactured housing shall be placed on a foundation, compliant with the building codes. And I think some of the, so there's also, there's international, um, manufactured housing, and I think that that also, that's why the state tried to mimic the international manufactured housing.
Some of those international manufactured houses are nice.
Oh, yeah, yep. Um, so I think, you know, we just gotta be careful if we're going to make any wholesale changes. I don't think that we could change manufactured housing, cause manufactured housing right now, it includes modular and mobile. So it's modular and mobile together make up manufactured. Then they have, so then we have mobile home parks, which are their own.
Right.
Their own, they have their own standards. And then if you had a manufactured housing park, it would just be a subdivision, like Greg said.
So we'll ju- use the SMPDC manufactured housing in replace of?
I don't think we should, because this says that-
We should keep it the same.
All right.
I mean, we could take out the things about the year, you know, we could take, so we could just say-
That's done because the standards changed, prior to seventy-six.
Yep.
You know, aluminum wire, things like that.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, and there are provisions in here for anything that's older than that too, like as long as they meet the same standards, then those are okay as well.
Okay.
I say we just keep them.
Sounds like if we, if we change this, we're going down a rabbit hole of changing ten other things. I just, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get stuck on perfect to throw away good.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Not saying we couldn't try for perfect, but-
I think what's it, what, I think what's here is, is fine.
So no change.
We'll see.
Okay.
All right, so moving on, so that takes care of mobile home. New mobile home, new coming def- new non-conforming is the next.
So I tried to very much simplify it. I think I pulled, I think that's a dec- uh, dictionary definition that I put in there. Is that what the suggestion from SMPDC is to keep the current definition? Do you know why that was a?
Where do you see that it test there? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I think the concern was that if we have it as just non-compliant to the applicable ordinances, it might be too vague and then someone could get hung up on like procedural things versus focusing on like the actual lot layout and the meeting the standards and that sort of thing. So we wanted to make sure that we specifically called out that it relates to the land structure. Um, and the property versus, yeah, other parts of the process.
Makes sense in my eyes.
I think-
I can get a more complete explanation of that though.
I think one thing for me, I mean, I'd rather not, I mean, I think that the opposite is true, that the way it's currently written is too much. Maybe we could say, structure, use of land or portion thereof, not in compliance with applicable ordinances. Because that does, I mean, I don't know if the language around public easement are taken by eminent domain really.
Well, if you have a house, then eminent domain comes in, takes away part of your land and I think that's kinda important to have in there.
Um, because then if, if, but it's, it-
If you're not conforming because of eminent domain, then you're not really, I think there's huge provision against that, would make sense.
It's not, I don't think it's exempting you from-
Yeah, I don't think-
It's not exempting you if they, it was taken by eminent domain, it just says, which is not conformed to all applicable provisions of this ordinance or which is made so by public easement or taken by eminent domain. So it doesn't say-
A million reasons why it could be non-conforming.
Yeah, all right.
If it's not, if it's non-conforming, it doesn't, it's not in compliance with that ordinance. It's a structure or a use or a lot.
Yep.
You know, it's pretty simple.
I like, I do like the portion thereof.
Um, I will say that we do have, so when I'm looking at the language in the zoning ordinance that uses non-conforming, we do say, um, non-conforming manufactured housing. It's one of the things that we talk about. Talk about a non-conforming structure. So I guess the term structure, it, so, uh, one point four point, you know, one point four, uh, is where we talk about non-conformance a lot. It's not the only non-conformance, but, um, we talk about it, so the, so one point four point one uses that language. The use of land, buildings or structures lawful at the time of adoption, I would say that we would, um, actually strike that, cause you don't want a definition.
So are you gonna take out non-conforming, because that doesn't say anything, it doesn't define it?
What do you mean, take it out?
Definition is a definition, it isn't, gee, it's not in compliance with the applicable ordinances, it doesn't tell people what non-conformance means.
It means it's not in compliance. What do you, what doesn't?
Tell them that in your definition. It's supposed to be a definition.
Yes, the current definition or the proposed change?
Well, the proposed change, it doesn't define anything.
It's not in compliance with applicable ordinance.
It would be changed to say that.
What does that mean to be non-conforming? It doesn't define anything.
It means that you're not in compliance with whatever-
Definitions I have a lot of problems with.
Well, okay, well, thanks for giving us the feedback.
Well, if we've gotten it before-
Are you, Mary, if you'd like to, so, please, sort of lectern, I don't really, I wish you'd-
At least a couple weeks before, I went on vacation last week, so I got it when I got back today.
Okay.
Are, are you angry with us, Mary, for providing this?
No, I'm not. I'm not angry with you. I think you're trying to push this through and you're asking for feedback and you, you, you should give it some time to give you feedback. I think some of your definitions don't define anything.
So Mary, what, in the, in the proposed definition, do you not understand?
Planning board, what is, what is your definition of planning board?
Planning board?
Mm-hmm.
We haven't changed the definition of planning board.
Right, I'm saying it doesn't say anything. The planning board of the town of Hollis.
What is code enforcement?
What else would it be, Mary?
Well, I mean, you could define-
Planning board ordinance, so maybe look at that.
Maybe you could refer to it. It doesn't, it doesn't give a definition. Public way isn't a definition.
Public way was taken from already existing definitions in two surrounding towns.
State definition or two surrounding towns?
Two surrounding towns.
State definition.
Public way?
Not to my knowledge.
Great, so our planner didn't have an issue with it. We could check it with law, with legal too, which I assume this will go to regardless.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't define it properly.
How do you say it doesn't define it? It said a state or town road.
I, I think we're getting down a rabbit hole.
It's a state, county, municipal road. It can be sidewalks, it can be bridges. You need to look at the state definition, not two surrounding towns.
SMPDC said it's okay.
Well, we might've missed some things.
Yeah, double check it.
I have a problem with one point six. You're still, one point five, you're still not in compliance with that you have to have a charter to say that-
The town voted that down, we, we can't-
What do you want us to do?
You can change it.
Change what? Oh, yeah, no, and we-
I don't think it'd be wise for the planning board to put things in here the town voted against.
And how are you doing your, um, how are you doing your public hearings? It doesn't define it.
Public hearings for what?
It says we have to have two prior to the warrant.
Yeah, well, how does it not?
Currently, the system doesn't work.
Yeah.
So we're addressing the system to be able to do it in a, in a manner that works and is-
But a lot of your definitions don't make much sense, in my opinion. And I can certainly send you written feedback if I had time to review it.
You've got plenty of time. We are not sending these up to you guys until the nineteenth.
Well, that's good.
So we'd love to have your feedback prior to the next meeting. That'd be great. The sooner that we get it, the more time we can review it as well.
And-
So back to-
Thank you. So we're at non-conforming.
Yeah.
So here we say non-conforming means not in compliance with applicable ordinances. Whether that's a structure, a use, a portion, a type of building, a, I don't know.
I do like the portion thereof, cause that-
Yeah.
So my, if it was me, I'd probably take, um, SMPDC's definition and end it at, I, I kinda just like their definition, I don't see any issue with it. Okay.
What's that, Mary?
I said, or just end it somewhere, but at least have a definition.
Let's just, I think we just take the whole. I guess we wanna add in-
Mary, it's one thing to not like the definition, it's another thing to say that we don't have a definition. There is a definition, you don't like it. Those are two different things.
Well, it would be considered a definition.
This isn't very Robert's Rule of Order, have a public speak.
Okay, that's fine. I'll see if I can, if you have an end.
We will have an end.
That's fine.
Where are you wanting to add in or portion thereof?
So I just kinda wanna take SMPDC's whole wholesale definition of non-conforming.
Construction use of land or portion thereof.
I just wanna take what, the whole thing they have.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Are you making changes?
I'm trying to.
Thank you.
All right, non-conforming.
So then we have a bunch of definitions that we removed. Um, personal service business was something that tied back to the use table. That was not one that we did. Um, we parcel or a lot.
Oh, yeah, so on that one-
That was an addition.
So do we talk about premises? So that was one that I, that the definitions are, um-
That's, we're not quite there, but yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize.
Parcel lot and premises kinda tie into each other.
But they're not exactly the same.
Yeah. So we added parcel or a lot, a land as described in a deed, plot or similar legal document. That's different than a premise, cause premise doesn't necessarily refer to a deed, plot or similar legal document. And then the next thing we had was personal service business, which was in the, not in the use table, or was in the use table but not def- it was in the use table previously, but we-
We felt that it was, you didn't need to have two different types of service businesses.
Yeah, we didn't wanna overly define a type of business. We wanted to have, have it a little bit broader, so we weren't specifically calling out uh, types of business when it wasn't required.
I don't see a definition for a service business though.
It's prof- uh, I think it's under profession-
Professional offices.
Professional offices, yeah.
Professional offices.
So that, that took all of your personal services and put them under professional, along with some other items.
We do have one item that, that is kind of in question, um, so, uh, I think I worked on this one. Um, I considered, uh, so professional offices obviously exclude a retail store or an industrial use. I consider a bank to be more like a retail store than a, um, financial services company. When I was, um, when, the way I was looking at this is, banks would be more like a retail store uh, because you have more than, you know, you have a number of customers going in, um, on a daily basis, so it's volume. And then I was looking, thinking of like, um, financial services offices, like your tax preparer. Um, you, you, you have people going in, but I would argue that in a bank, you're going into, you know, it's much more like a retail business, the amount of traffic that you have. So I'd want them to meet the retail, um-
You didn't explain it to me last time when I commented. That's a great explanation.
Sorry about that.
That's a great explanation.
So that's, that's why I separated out banks, um, but I'm not tied to, I'm not, I'm not super tied to that.
I actually agree with you now. Any, you guys, any questions? You guys have a chance to look at this, I mean, following along?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
I bet you Butch is gonna have some comments.
Oh, yeah, planned, um, unit development.
So there's a lot of like fluff in that definition.
Yeah.
You know, that, that is, that should be more part of the, um, you know, according to a comprehensive and detailed plans. Well, define comprehensive and detailed. If the plans are good enough for us to improve them or approve them, then we don't need all this kinda fluffy language. Um, I think that, you know, talking about like the intent of a planned unit development, if the definition isn't the right place to do that either.
I agree.
Um, then going down, the rest are some deletions from orphaned. Next one we added was residential use. A premise under building design occupied with a principal use providing living quarters as a dwelling unit. There are some other performance standards that refer back to a residential use as the main use. So that's why we needed to put that in there. Uh, restaurant's gone because of its orphaned, uh, retail store, uh, now includes banks and other financial institutions. Does not include convenience stores since that has its own.
Do we want it to have its own? I guess that's one question.
Uh, I think we had it separated in the use table of where the-
It was done that way.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to keep it, I guess? Is there a reason why? Or what about a convenience store is different?
I think, I think a convenience store typically is allowed in smaller neighborhoods where you necessarily wouldn't want a larger store.
Yep, that's good enough reason for me.
That's the reason, when I, when I did some research, that's what I found.
That works for me.
Um, rooming housing unit kinda aligned it with the rest of our ordinances. Cleaned it, there was a lot of fluff in that one as well. Senior housing, we had elderly housing and senior housing, so we, what's that?
Senior's brand now.
Okay, so we had, we had elderly and we changed it to senior to kinda fall in line with some other documents.
I think that also, you know, senior housing is, it could be a development, that's like a fifty-five and up, right? Or it could be a independent living, commu- uh, independent living building. Uh, one, you know, one building with a bunch of rooms in it. So I think that was kinda what I was trying to get, trying to get at.
It also got discussed at complaint committee where senior housing isn't a, it really isn't an essential thing in, in the town of Hollis. It's a thing that we're lacking in the town of Hollis, it's a thing we need to at least understand needs to exist. Um, and any, any way we could make it easier for senior housing to exist in most of the zones when, um, before elderly housing, um, was kinda wishy-washing.
It's limited.
We added senior housing and then made it like again more, more available in the zones that should have senior housing, so.
Uh, next addition would be site plan review. There was no definition for site plan review. Sketch plan, so sketch plan had a, a definition, but site plan didn't. Um, so we kinda cleaned that, cleaned site, sketch plan up as well. Um, street was merged with road. Um, timber harvesting had some additions. I don't know, just cleaning up.
Yeah, we wanted to, this one, I think, this was the state, we followed the state definition and the state definition includes the construction of the road as part of the use.
Yeah, that way you're not getting a permit to build a road and then clearing, cause that's not how it works in the real world.
Town meeting, um, town meeting is the, that is, I took that from state law as well. Um, that is how they refer to the the public.
Yeah.
And I think it comes into place.
Uh, next variance, we had a, actually somebody had a different, recent public hearing requesting some changes on variance. We took that to heart and kinda looked at that. Warehouse is a, now a use, we just, we cleaned that up. We cleaned up a bunch, there was like three or four different uses that we combined into one, industrial, um-
Cleaned it up, really?
Yeah, it was just a, a bunch of uses that didn't make sense that we combined into one concise use as warehouse.
And some of the stuff was maybe at, at some point in the past, it had been a lot more relevant than it is now. Um, where new uses didn't exist, I don't wanna say back then, because that makes it seem dated, but it, it's been a bit since a lot of this stuff has been updated and at least brought up to standards with a lot of the state, um, state definitions. So we tried to find as much as possible to, again, take from state, um, which I believe has served us well as, there's not, not, I, I expected a lot more comments from SMPDC regarding things that we found, that, that they found issue with, but knowing that we took a lot of it from, you know, click and drag stuff. but knowing that we took a lot of it from, you know, click and drag stuff, from existing ordinance and existing state definitions and, and state, um, standards that it, it did, it made the job a little more straightforward.
Yeah, a lot of these definitions were not concocted in our head.
Yeah.
Does town meeting just refer to any meeting of the select board then?
Nope, capitalized, it's not select board meeting. Town meeting is, it just-
It's very specific in the ordinance to what the town meeting is.
Town meeting is, um, so, it's a, it's about the voting, it's about when we vote.
Yeah, and it should only be like the specific meeting dates versus like a regularly scheduled select voting.
Yeah.
That's why it's the legislative body and not-
It doesn't say legislative body in-
Oh, versus board, or?
Municipal legislative, that's what the town meeting definition is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's only used five times in here. So then, the, um, one point five is where it's used three times, and then one point six is the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So wildlife preserve was a use but not a definition. Same with wood processing, we had a use but not a definition. And then zoner district.
So I have a couple of, um, items that I marked off as being like, at least for a bit of discussion. You don't have to do a ton of it.
In definitions, or?
Yeah, just definitions.
Okay.
So, we, did we come to the conclusion does, so commercial use, which is the use of land, buildings, or structures for the primary purpose of producing income. Our ordinance right now that, that definition says, you know, so I guess the question is, do we, um, do we consider home occupations a commercial use, or not?
We said in here that it was not.
Uh, so-
In this, in this one that we've been going to.
Yeah, it says excludes home occupations. That's what we have in our, that proposed.
That's, okay.
Yeah, commercial, yes, it says, "Commercial use excludes home occupation and the renting of-"
Secondary to the residential use, that's why we had to add residential use.
And then I just wanna make sure, cuz I thought there was, in then, in the home occupation, it might have been a little bit. I just wanna make sure that we stay consistent, so that it's not-
It says, "Home occupation is also commercial use of the dwelling unit."
So wait, say that again?
Home occupation, then all, then says, "A home occupation is also-"
So that's what I was seeing the discrepancy.
It excludes home occupation and-
If you look in the definition of home occupation, we say that it is a commercial use.
Then I wrote, "It is a residential accessory use."
Okay.
That was my comment that I made.
So, we, we are going to be, like, I think this, we had, we know that there's been some confusion with code, and I think this is probably where it came from.
So home occupation is a residential accessory use of the dwelling unit and the accessory dwel- building of a dwelling unit, et cetera. Looks like I, I had that comment in there at one point. See that?
Yeah, I don't see your comment.
Does it, does it say that, uh, already that the home occupation is a, is used on, on the, on the premises or a building on the premises and it doesn't distract from the-
Yeah.
Local stop and yap, yap, yap.
Yeah, that's why we don't want it to have to be a commercial use, we want it to be a residential accessory use. So you have to have a residential use, and the home occupation is accessory to that.
So do you have a definition from a residential accessory use?
We have a definition of residential and a definition of accessory use. There's not one definition of them, of them together.
Okay.
Which is more than we had, correct?
I think so. Alright, so that, and then I'm gonna just check, well, we can check the ordinance.
Then we had residential use.
Residential.
What I'm saying is accessory to the residential use. That's how, that's how I meant, that's what I should say.
Yeah.
Then we just refer, it's accessory, which we have definition of, and we reference it as a use definition of.
S and P D C likes it.
I said, that sounds good to me.
They've done a lot of homework on this. This has been like a year and a half in the making, it's to some degrees.
Yeah, these aren't easy to get through.
Okay.
Do you, what's your next one that you have for conversation?
Uh, hold on a second.
Yeah.
Just wanna get this right. The next one. Uh, impervious area, so in impervious area, uh, roads and parking areas that will be compacted through use or design so as to reduce their permeability. Oh, if you look at the definition of impervious area, I was just hoping Greg might be able to clarify for me what part three means, cuz I think it's just a, I didn't make any changes to this, this is what it looks like right now.
Buildings are covered in straw. An area covered by one more thong, first one, building mirrors and covered structures, two, permanent low perimeter, or three gravel.
Got it, I-
Yeah, my switch mean.
Yeah, I was seeing, I was reading it very differently.
I read it like that the first time.
It's percentage, percentage coverage on a lot, isn't it, right?
No.
No, that was just all I, all I did.
This is just the definition, so it's saying what impervious area is, not how much you can have, that would be a performance standard.
Next one is-
These are the highlighted ones, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Industrial use does not, does not include the final extraction, that's a separate one. Next one being net residential.
Uh, I didn't have that highlighted, uh, but acreage, uh, oh yeah, sorry, yep, that is where it is. Um, I just didn't like the term cut off from the main parcel, I didn't feel like those were like appropriate words, but I was, I think I was getting, it was getting pretty late.
What are you talking about?
Net residential density.
I thought you said mixed.
So we're looking at all the stuff that's highlighted in yellow, this is stuff that Heather, that Heather flagged as potential conversation starters.
So you just didn't like the words land which is cut off from the main parcel, that doesn't seem like it fits our, what's the ma- what, what's the main parcel?
The number of dwelling units allowed per net residential, net residential.
So, it, we have to just find different words for cut off and main. Land which is not adjacent, like, it just seems like that's a ta- like, cut off, what does cut off mean?
Means it's separated by a road, existing land use.
So let's say separated.
Where no means of access has been provided.
Okay, so land which is-
It's right in there already.
Where is it?
So Heather wants those changed, cut off, to the word separated.
Yeah, I mean, cut off just isn't a word, isn't, like, it didn't make sense to me.
Yeah, good enough. Cut off isn't a definition.
Uh, and then from the main parcel, what's, how do you, how, what's the mean?
The parcel would be developing.
The parcel that is separated from.
Um.
Yeah.
From a, can it say a parcel by a road?
Sure.
Like, I guess I palled it a little bit there. Okay, good, and then, I think.
Do we use net residential area in our space in bulk?
Area, no, then we don't, it's only use, net residential area?
With net residential density.
Definitely, we'd use that, I think. Nope.
I don't think they need-
Uh, but it might be in, um, shoreland or subdivision.
We have to check subdivision. Cuz I'll see, we don't calculate that, that way. The way it's saying we calculate it is not the way we calculate it.
Huh.
How do we miss that?
It's mentioned in cluster developments and subdivision, but, no.
You wanna back up one definition to net residential acreage, since you're making corrections?
Yep.
A parcels, I don't think they should be in there.
Yep. You're right.
I got it right here.
She can't search, though.
I can, if, uh-
No, uh, yes you can on subdivision.
I can't search my paper.
Yeah.
You wanna keep going?
No. Let's just figure this out.
If you're trying to find where it comes into play?
Yep.
Cuz we might not even need it, is that, we're gonna delete it.
S and P D C said cluster.
Um, under cluster developments, uh, the purpose of these provisions is to allow for more innovative concepts of housing development where maximum variations of design may be allowed, provided that the net residential density shall be no greater than what is permitted in the zoning district in which the development is proposed.
But we don't use net desen- we don't use net residence density to, in our zones.
So that's old.
Yeah.
It's since been changed, we don't use net residential densi- density.
We don't, we don't, we, we don't exclude wetlands as part of your acreage to use as buildable lot.
Right, 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 you don't lose, it's not dead land like in subdivision.
So we need to get rid of this, this definition.
But it's-
Well now, I, I read something about not counting wetlands, not counting slopes, not counting this, that, and the other for net residential density.
So, net res-
And what you're gonna get is people using garbage land to fill the acreage requirements for them to build on properly.
So, in the subdivision regulations, net residential density is defined as the number of dwelling units allowed per net residential acre?
Right, so-
Is that consistent or different than how we-
Different in the zoning ordinance.
So maybe we take it out completely, like you said.
So I, I think we can remove net desen- residence, density as it is in the zoning ordinance.
Well, that, that would have been used for cluster development.
But that's, in subdivision, it's defined there.
It's subdivision's not defined the same way.
Okay.
Subdivision, it's total acreage, it doesn't, doesn't delete wetlands and such.
And this does, yep.
And it, and it should, you shouldn't be able to use wetlands and swamps to give you acreage to build.
Why?
Why?
Cuz you just shouldn't.
Why?
The subdivision we had in front of us tonight had-
It's when you, that's when you wanna, you wanna call it, uh, open space or open loop area, or whatever the case.
But you still need that, you still need the same area.
It's just not buildable land.
Or you still can't build there.
Correct.
But it still fits your net, your density requirements, your space in bulk. Whether you run it as open space.
So wherever you don't have a structure, you're gonna have land that isn't good for anything.
You would anyway, wouldn't you?
Well, I don't know. You might, you might or you might not.
I'm just saying, we don't currently do it that way.
You sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz that's not how it's defined in subdivision regs.
Yeah.
Subdivision regs don't have all that, it just says, "The number of dwelling units allowed per net residential acre."
And our space in bulk doesn't say net residential density, density.
There are some towns that do it like that.
There are some towns that do it like that, we are not one of them.
We used to be one of them.
They must have changed it.
That's where this comes from.
I'm good.
So we're gonna delete net residence, then, you go, you sure?
Yeah, yeah, hey, hey.
Good, I just think it opens up more opportunities for people to build houses. You know, if we don't, if you own ten acres and nine of it's wetlands, now you only own an acre.
And what are we using space in bulk, overall density?
Yeah.
We don't define that.
It doesn't say overall density.
Yeah, it does.
Does it?
Yeah.
Hmm, I think it does, I just looked.
It says- Uh, in RR two-
Lot size. It says lot size.
RR two.
Minimum lot size, minimum lot size.
Additional cluster subdivision requirements, A, overall density. Does that matter? It's accurate.
But it's still going off of lot size, minimum lot size.
Got it.
So it doesn't matter. Like, you don't even de- definition for overall density, cuz you're-
Ooh, yeah, cuz we don't define, yeah, you're right, you're right, we don't define density anyway.
So, net residential den- density, delete.
Yep, got it, that's the only place we see it in zoning.
Good catch. We just caught it, so I said- My pages are getting a lot older here. Somebody was, somebody was dumb and unstapled them.
Okay, so then-
For a reason.
And that someone was me, I'm not placing any blame anywhere else.
Alright, so then, any other, let's see. Uh, yeah, no, we already talked about personal service business and professional business, we talked about the bank. Uh, we talked about retail, not including convenience stores.
Senior housing.
Yeah, it's, I think that-
I think we hit all of these.
I think you're right.
I looked for them as we went through.
Awesome, yeah.
Alright.
Oh, we used the term institutional use, does anyone know what we mean by, or why we, what institutional means as compared to industrial, commercial, retail?
Um, institutional zones are sometimes like municipal buildings and those kind of facilities, if you wanna parse them out, but-
Okay, so institutional would be municipal.
Or like, um, some towns do like prisons, they put under institutional.
Got it.
So it wouldn't belong under the definition of warehouse?
It, it, yeah, we pulled that definition from something else.
Right, I know, I assume.
Yeah, so it's in warehouse? It's one of the types of uses.
Eh, read it.
Right, but then we have to define it, if we define commercial, we define industrial.
Yeah, so it's derivative industrial.
Understood.
Or in, institutional?
Yeah, so either, either we, we don't use it anyplace else.
So do we wanna allow institutionals?
I don't even know what institutional is, except, I don't know how.
So it would be, pertaining to the particular use.
We have to, we don't have a definition for it, so we're either gonna define it or delete it.
Take it out.
Delete.
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 Done.
Alright, section, we're good in definitions?
We are good in definitions.
Alright, and you guys can review this before the next meeting again.
Yeah, I'll send this back out with the, and if you guys have comments, feel free to provide your comments, and I'll make the, I can make the changes to the document if, uh-
And we can review any-
The red line with the comments that you said was good, I mean, I was just able to riff right through it.
That was the intent.
That's what we wanted. Um-
Hopefully it helped.
And Heather, I just have one request.
Sure, Mary.
I mean, I thought that the red lines were great, can you number the pages?
Yeah, I don't, I usually tend to not do that right away.
It would just make it really easier when we're reviewing stuff.
I'll put the page numbers in.
Cuz like, like Greg said, it's easy to get them.
Well, mine were stapled, and then-
I'll do it right now, Mary.
I, I do them, you know.
That was my fault. Luckily, I know my ABCs, I can put it back in.
I like to have numbers on the pages, too.
You do?
Yeah.
Uh, page numbers right here.
Alright, um-
No problem.
Number, section two, administration.
Uh, let's do these statements, then, since we just a definition.
Cuz we, yeah, I was, yeah. I was gonna say, you might as well knock.
Well, I, I, six of one, half thousand other performance standards, use table definition.
Use table aside, then we can at least.
Okay.
Complete stuff.
Heather wants, is bullying me into doing use table.
That's right, that's me.
Yeah, the big bully.
So there's a lot of red lines on this. Yellow, yellow is-
We have to talk about it.
Yellows, we have to talk about it. Red line is takeout.
And that conforms to the definition.
Underline, underline is, what's underline? And what's just straight red?
Uh, it should, there should be no straight red, that should be underlined.
There is, commercial uses, okay.
That should be underlined, this, you don't actually redline a Excel document, so. So what I'm hoping we can do on this one is, take a look at these things, and then I would clean it up a little bit so that there, so that we could be looking at it-
Without all the deletions?
All the deletions, yep.
Okay, so, starting at the top, um, ADUs, we need to allow any place that has a single family. That was a comment from S and P D C.
And that wraps up the two yellows that are up there.
They both, we just have to add them permitted?
Yeah.
And does the C in NHRC?
Has to be permitted.
That's P.
Okay, the two, the two blank yellow spaces are, are gonna be left by it.
Nope.
We allow single family- We allow single family, we have to allow them.
For permitted.
Actually, hold on, I take that back.
That's a one acre lot in the village zone and the buildables are different.
We do not allow single family there, so we don't need to allow them.
Yep, you're right. And then same thing in RR three forty. Right, RR three C.
That's correct. We do not need to allow them.
That's why.
In the Hollis Center Village forty K.
RRC three, um, this is in clusters.
RR three clusters, we do not need to allow, cause sing- why are, why are single dwelling units not allowed and?
In a cluster subdivision.
That should, I think we gotta change that.
So that should be P?
Yeah, so we should allow it up top.
Wait, is, is, are, is anything that's in RR three C, is that automatically conditional because C is conditional, because clusters are conditional?
We have to have the. So RR three C in our old use table didn't allow, wasn't permitted for single family either.
But RR three C is RR three cluster, so we don't put anything else in a cluster except.
Single fam, or.
Oh, the C is cluster?
Yeah.
Should it be a C for conditional use? Because if it's a cluster subdivision, it's gonna come through the planning board for conditional use? Or is, yeah.
Well, that's my question. In, if that's the case, anything that's in RR three C that's, that's now a P has to be a C, right?
I, I would say.
Because the only thing you could put in a cluster subdivision, uh, the only thing you could put in RR three C is a cluster subdivision, right? Maybe not. I thought that RR three C.
No, cause you can do things like agriculture and, no, you could, there is things you can do with that.
So we're just saying, okay. Alright, okay. So then I guess the question would be, so single families would be just permitted?
So ADU in the R, in the RR three C would be permitted.
What would a single family dwelling in RR three C?
Which are, uh, three, yes?
Subdivision.
Regular subdivision.
I know, right? Agreed, agreed.
So subdivision is conditional, the ADU is allowed in that subdivision, but this whole, subdivision whole is conditional.
So the single family dwelling in there.
We allow in RR three is permitted.
Permitted, okay. So once you get the subdivision approved, you can just, you don't need to come back for additional proof. Got it. Alright. So P for accessory there, and P for single family dwelling unit in that.
Yep.
Where we at?
And then North Hollis Resource Zone is P, okay.
We're still in ADU.
What's happening with these first two yellow spots? That's what I wanna know.
Stay in the way they are, black.
Black.
Alright.
Because you caught it.
Okay.
Alright, next thing we have accessory structure and accessory use, NHRC, C in both of those.
I don't know why we called them C.
That's, um, that's how it was before.
Oh, yeah, that is how it was. So do we, are we okay with that? Because NHRC zone, I don't know that, I mean, that's one of the stricter zones, isn't it?
That North Hollis Resource Zone, used to be five acre zone.
It's two, it's four acres now.
Yeah, uh, no, that's five acres.
So we want anyone who wants to put in an accessory structure or do an accessory use in that zone, we want them to come in front of us.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Uh, next one we have is agriculture. This was broken up in different places before. And so we added this and let it be available basically anywhere that's two acres or more. Sorry, I'm gonna go, I gotta go back one real quick.
Yeah.
Um, NHRCZ, the one we're just talking about, is that not the one with a bottling plant and tons of solar panels in it?
I think it's next to.
I had the map pulled up on my phone, but I can double check.
Ah, let's see.
If I'm not mistaken. We're asking for, yeah. We said conditional. We're not changing it. That's how it was previously. Okay.
You're talking accessory use in the.
It's, I, I just, I'm.
Yep.
I have a hard time getting around the fact that we're, it's North Hollis Resource Conservation Zone, and it has.
I think that came after our home's.
Yeah, it has our biggest.
So it says limited development shall be permitted, that's all we really said.
Biggest industrial, commercial operation.
Limited because the, how many acres they own versus how many they're disturbing.
Yep.
They own.
Most.
A lot of acreage, more than what they disturb, so I think that's why it's considered limited still.
Because it's limited to the amount of land that they have.
If they own a hundred acres, they're only using ten, that's pretty limited. But if you own ten and you're using five, that's not very limited.
But if they own a hundred and they're using ten for the, again, I hate using them as an example, but using ten for the bottling plant and then now they're using forty seven for a solar farm.
Is that?
Is that now limited use?
Says limited development.
Limited, is that now limited development?
They've just. Solar farm development, cause it's.
I mean, you clear cut forty seven acres of trees and put in solar panels.
They leave their fenced agencies off the ground to allow animals to go in and out.
No, it's very considerate.
Let's not, uh, let's not because it's something that we've dealt with already.
I'm just saying, like. Alright, down the hole. Need, no more rabbits, no more rabbits. Okay. So agriculture was an item that had a ton of, um, it's very weird how it was written before. Just kinda cleaned it up.
Okay, but I'm gonna ask about the seven, the note seven we got on the flood hazard zone and the resource protection. You're taking the seven out. Is that the Y C?
Cause it all says is no.
No, we're putting in the seven. So we're gonna say no farm residences allowed in FHZ.
Well, why does it have a red line to the seven?
It doesn't.
That's accessory use you're looking at. We're down to agriculture.
Which is the fourth one down right here.
Yeah, alright.
And then aquaculture, we had a definition, but no use.
I think, don't think we should have permitted in FHZ.
Does it have to go peanut C?
It is peanut.
Do we need the seven there if it's not in the FHZ box anyway?
We need the seven because it's allowed, if, if, so is there, um, if you're in an E O Z. And it meets the flood hazard zone definition, then it wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, that's what seven means.
Yep.
So aquaculture, you wanna change FHZ?
Uh, should we change, um, yeah, aquaculture P to C and FHZ?
Does that make sense? Um, so we scrolled down, auto service facility. Before, we had auto secluded, auto service station, no few, auto service, auto service station, two or more islands, auto, it was just. We just made it all auto service facility.
Okay, you skipped over assisted living facilities.
We crossed those out.
Those are deleted, cause they're now.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. I see that now.
They're something else now.
So anything in gray is a deletion that either we deleted it or we, it's, it's, you know, most of them, they're merged together.
What, what does assisted living facility?
Senior, senior housing.
Senior housing.
Senior housing.
Yeah. And then we allowed it in more zones than it was.
We're not there yet.
Oh, yeah, sorry, carry on. I think we'll do deletion, uh, yeah. Just, you're doing good. You're on the right track. Those are deleted and they're added somewhere else, combined somewhere else.
The next version of this will not show that.
Yeah, so auto service facility, just combined everything. Um, now we allow auto collision service in town, which we didn't before, which was very odd.
And I just mimicked, we just mimicked auto wash.
And where is it included in?
It's in the definition of auto service facility.
Okay.
We updated that.
Yep. And then saw our Ps, we changed them to Cs because we were rolling in multiple definitions into one in auto stuff, and people get finicky about auto stuff. So instead of just putting them Ps where they're permitted before, we changed it to Cs, so that any, basically any auto service or sales period would come. Would, yeah, would come across the. Before it allowed like a thousand, a thousand square foot one to be just allowed.
Right.
Fifteen hundred had to come to us. Now we just put it all, just come to us. You couldn't, and then you couldn't replace, um, a fender on a car for a living in any zone except for one, I believe, was a conditional. Um, and, but you could change an engine in most of them without, um, coming in front of the board. So it was a little more oversight. Then we, next, we added some conditional use areas for auto washing facility, some of the more, the bigger zones. Uh, bed and breakfast, we separated from inns, hotels, and motels, holiday inns, um. The reason behind that was that we didn't want them to fall into the same, you, a motel six is allowed in one place, you know, a bed and, a bed and breakfast, which is by far.
I think it's like one.
Less invasive, should be allowed in more, more areas than a motel six, um, if it ever got to that point, obviously. Um, so it didn't seem correct to put them in the same category, so that's why bed and breakfast retained. It's why they have the same definition, but different uses. Correct, that's it, yep. Make sense?
I'd like to ask about automobile graveyard.
Yep.
It's permitted in the economic overlay zone.
Yep. Yep, it's conditional in E O Z.
Yes, could, yeah, okay, condition.
But not, but it is prohibited in, and if, if the E O Z is in North Hollis Resource Zone.
It is not allowed.
It is not permitted, and it is not permitted, uh, within five hundred feet of any body of water.
I saw that.
Yep.
Does that, does that seem right to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Well, I'm, I was just questioning, we, we're only allowing it in the overlay zone, but that's basically all over the place.
It's all across one seventeen thirty five, two oh two.
Yeah, two oh two, yeah.
And that was, that wasn't changed from any of the previous ordinance. We left that right alone because.
Yeah, I think we just added the three.
So boathouses, pier, docks, wharves, and bridges.
We didn't have anything for that.
We got rid of the seven in the RP and added three and five.
So the only place that those are allowed is in C, uh, E O Z and Resource Protection Zone, correct?
Correct.
So why would we need it conditional in E O Z, but not in Resource Protection?
How it was, and we don't have an answer. I was gonna say, it was, I think that was one of the ones where. We talked about it and then had no answer.
Do we think we wanna put it anyplace else?
Any input into that? We're gonna make a note and kinda look into that?
Yeah, I'm also just thinking about like boathouses versus piers in terms of like permanency of the structure. And how long it's there, like something you're dropping seasonally versus like a built, like some of the stored boats.
Piers and docks can, and piers and wharves definitely, and bridges are definitely permanent. I'm not so sure about docks. Like a wharf is permanent, right? You wouldn't take that out.
Wasn't it also?
Why can't you take a wharf out?
Would, do we have definition of wharf? Don't think we do.
No.
Have you had a lot of applications come through on those things?
No, no. I don't think you can build a boathouse anymore legally.
Hey, your shoreline zoning is probably gonna cover most of that stuff.
And I think, and that's also in, right? That was in shoreline zone.
Yep.
So. Uh, and then, this book, oil, fuel, that should all, that should be deleted.
The word storage, delete.
No, the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That whole line should be deleted.
This whole thing is deleted. So we're not allowing any, well, it's now a different type.
Now they're in, in, um, warehouse, I believe is the definition they fall under.
Uh, campground is there, are we all good? I didn't, I didn't mark it as with the yellow, so I guess I'll shut up.
Um, so cannabis, so cannabis used to have its own use table. We just combined it with this use table? Nothing got changed, nothing got added, nothing got removed. We just got rid of the number ten. What was in the ten?
I don't remember what ten was, um, but I can pull that up.
I got you, two seconds. Uh, ten was, applies to new structures in development only. Okay, so now it applies to all structures. Right.
Right.
So instead of just. It's actually more restrictive than it was before. Okay. Uh, church, so we got rid of schools.
Cause that's a public facility.
Yeah, so, cause it has a different definition. Church and public facility. We just changed the wording on that.
What did you do with nonprofit clubs lodges, meeting halls?
That is now function hall.
No, no, community, well, it could be community center. Nope, community center is municipal.
Hold on, we won't, we, I remember.
We talked about this. I think it's function.
F U, function hall, it's commercial.
We didn't put function hall in.
I thought it was community center.
Community center is, um, owned by the municipality. That's like, that's like the ball field. Which I think is a different use than, uh, nonprofit churches.
No, 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 no. No, it's community center, a government or not-for-profit owned premises and or structures designed to provide a community space. For recreational, social, educational, health, culture, or similar activities and services.
Well, there it is.
So it falls in the community?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
What was your initial question? Which one?
Uh, it was, uh, clubs, nonprofit clubs lodges, yeah, cause we have some.
Yep, oh, yeah.
VFW.
Yeah, yeah, that.
So, yeah, now falls under community center.
Yeah, we took them out, so we got them in there somewhere, that's all.
Yep. Do we wanna add, so, I don't know if we wanna allow them in HCV, NHV, the small, um, the small lots.
What was it? Oh, there was Cs across the board before.
No, uh, no, nonprofit clubs, oh, yeah, it was Cs across the board, so I guess we could just update that to Cs.
So nonprofits, clubs, lodges, and meetings hall, meeting halls was, was conditional use across the board mostly.
And I think that four is not the right, yeah, that four is not the right four. I'll check what that was.
And then it didn't, it didn't transfer over and.
Well.
So they, so they'll be Cs, I mean, I guess.
That means if we got, we got the Hollis Grange, we gotta come and, and get a.
Yeah, you gotta come before the board and ask permission.
I think churches should probably have to come through.
If you were gonna do something different, you wouldn't need to do it retroactively.
If you wanna build a new one, why wouldn't you?
Yeah, or if you wanted to add on, uh, change, uh, add a use, so if you wanted to have that plus a restaurant that was open to the public, that might, right? Add a use.
If you wanted to make one, you'd have to come before this chain, before, before these edits, you would have to come in front of the planning board for a conditional use permit. If you wanted to start a VFW in those zones.
And, yeah, you still do.
Yeah, and we just carried it over.
The four will come out on those though.
Okay.
So something like a VFW is gonna be more restrictive than a church?
Churches, oh, churches.
Churches are permitted.
They're across the board.
Churches are permitted. They don't have to come for conditional use, and a community center does. Does that make sense?
Does that make sense?
I mean, philosophically, no, but.
And, I mean, we just, they just did one in Buxton where the church had to come in front of the planning board for.
I guess I just worry about groups coming to you and saying that they're a church.
Um.
It does leave it open, I like that. So we say church, change church to Cs instead of Ps? What was it before?
In public facilities, of schools, like we're gonna.
Yeah, why would they not come in front of the planning board?
Because they don't have to, they can do whatever they want?
No, no, rules for everybody, every fault is a rule.
Not in other towns.
But we don't have a, um.
We might.
Okay.
Cs.
Cs, is that okay with everybody?
I'm okay with it. Changing all the churches to Cs instead of Ps?
You guys are making our jobs a lot harder.
Or, we're making the planning board a vital. Asset. To the town.
Uh, for community center, I'm adding C in E O Z. There's no reason we wouldn't wanna have that.
Makes sense.
And then there is now, the only difference is that a community center has a C in it, in the North Hollis Resource, but churches and schools don't. I say we add churches and schools.
What's the four?
What's up?
Four is.
Yeah, the four isn't, no, the four's old. It, I just never crossed it out. That's the old four.
No, I, the note four is what I was talking about.
It, that is not, it does not apply. I, it.
It falls over and shouldn't.
It's gonna be gone.
It's not it.
It's just an editing error.
Alright, so next, uh, convenience store. So we changed that out from retail. We, we put a separate definition in it. We're allowing those in small area areas. Cause the idea is that a small community store will be in smaller, small areas.
Daycare center, we added, correct?
Correct.
Conditional in most places except for sub, except for R R two subdivisions, cluster. But we at, we're allowed an R R three cluster?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, we could put it, I mean, I think daycare centers should go everywhere, so, I mean, if we could get more daycare centers, more people could work.
But I think a twenty K cluster, that's a pretty, that's half an acre, that's pretty tight.
Yep, so we'll, we'll take it out of R R three?
Cluster, I mean.
I'll take it, there's nothing in R R three cluster except clusters, and now single-family dwellings.
I don't know if you either wanna have clusters and daycares and combined.
Yeah, I mean.
Are cluster subdivisions, they're, they're conditional use, or are they permitted?
They're conditional.
All subdivisions are cluster, are, uh, conditional.
Cause you've got a line item on here.
It's got a P on it.
With all Ps, yeah.
Uh, three C.
Okay, cool.
Cluster subdivision permitted.
But you still need to have, you have to come in front of the board for review.
So why isn't it conditional then?
Because it's not a conditional use, it's a conditional, it's a, um, it's a major minor subdivision, right?
Yep, so it's not a, it's not a use, it's a.
Okay, it falls under subdivision regulation.
Yeah. That, is that right?
I'm, I mean, I think that it could be.
I was looking, is that, does that seem right? They're allowed, but you still need to do.
You're allowed, it's, it's allowed as long as the subdivision is allowed.
Is permitted, yeah.
Yeah. But the subdivision, yeah.
We'll double check.
Cause you wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't do a conditional use and then a subdivision.
Right, it'd be all, yeah, that makes sense.
So it's all, you can do it, but you have to get, you have to do this to do that.
To get the subdivision.
Yep.
Uh, so daycare center, we did that, uh, we changed fa, single-family home to dwelling, single-family.
So we're adding, um, P to North Hollis Resource, uh, so, okay. The only places we're not allowing single-family homes are H C V, N H V, and then N H R C, R P, and flood hazard zone, is that correct?
N H R C has a P.
Sorry, yep.
Just F, P, R P and F H C.
And then what about H C V and N H V?
No, they were, they weren't allowed before.
Okay.
Alright, uh, dwelling two-family. Those haven't changed.
Why are we allowing a two-family in R P, but not a single-family?
We had this conversation, I think, and I don't think it ever came to a head, or it needed to carry over.
I think they should be the same.
So if we don't allow single-family dwellings, um, what do we allow in R P? Cause I don't see.
Apparently two-family and multifamily.
Yep.
Do I put a key, uh, C in?
For a single?
Or we take it out in other ones?
I don't wanna take it out.
Okay, so we'll put conditional for a single.
And the R P zone?
Yep.
Because it has two-family and multifamily conditional.
Uh, P, P for single.
You're making it a P or a C?
So P for single, C for two, well.
Everything else is C.
Why do we need a C, why do we need a two-family to be a C?
We shouldn't.
I don't think there's much in R P that isn't.
Well, single-family is, uh, farm stand is, uh, food service establishment, mobile unit is.
You can have a daycare, a home daycare, but you can't have a house.
Right, yep.
Alright, go to Pete, you're right, I'm sorry, carry on.
But I think we say C for dwelling multifamily, because we have to see that anyway, don't we?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Uh, next equine facility, we just changed that from commercial stable, changed the use. Farm stand is new, we wanna make sure everybody can do that in town.
When you see equine facility?
It used to be commercial stable, under dwelling multifamily, third line down, it's yellow.
Okay, okay.
Yep, then we add the farm stand and put them everywhere. If you're gonna have a farm stand on the side of your house.
Well, you have to have a farm. You already have a farm stand, don't you?
Nope. Read the definition.
I will rely on your knowledge.
That's very bold of you. Bold move, guy.
I like farm stands, so I'm good.
So the, the next, like, three quarters of page are all combining all of these except for the extraction of rock, which is mineral extraction, I think. Yep, I just got changed and moved, cause it was weird. Oh, that one, that one got deleted because it didn't apply.
Yeah, I'm sorry that it's yellow, it shouldn't have been.
And then we just took food service establishment and took every place restaurants were available, and put them all as Cs. And then allowed mobile food trucks everywhere, so you can run a mobile food truck anywhere you want in town.
So, but you can't have a, you can't have a food establishment only in the village zone, looks like?
This and E O Z.
Okay, okay, so that's everywhere.
So you can't have it in R R two, R R three?
Can't have it in residential zones.
Yep, well.
Wow.
E O Z's in residential.
Wow, yeah, it's an overlay zone, yep. Uh, funeral establishment, that, just cross the word homeout.
Yeah. Uh, did we wanna add any, so I, I noticed that there were a couple of spots that it might, I mean, not, okay, so not in C, on the two Cs, but what about in North Hollis Village? North Hollis Village.
You permitted it in Hollis Center Village Zone, but not in the one-acre zone, but not in the one-acre zone for the north hall.
Right, that's, I think that's why I highlighted that one.
So we'll throw a C in there?
Yeah.
Make it consistent. And then, next we have fuel station, that's only in E O Z.
Do we wanna add them anywhere?
I don't think so.
I agree.
Uh, harvesting wild crops, that was something that was in here, and it was kind of a weird thing.
Yeah, um, and I just thought, if you're, you know, do we really wanna restrict it from subdivisions? I mean, I don't really know. Did we just ever determine if that was harvesting wild crops on public property, on private property? Yep.
I mean, cluster subdivision would be coming nice, cause if you have an open space, you could then hay the field, I say allow it everywhere.
For fuel station, does it make sense to add that little one that you had for the auto stations?
What was the question?
For fuel station, would you carry over that same one that you had for auto stuff?
Oh, not near the.
That's cause it's like similar runoff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, not within one, that's a great idea.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
We will add that.
So what are we doing, putting a seven?
On fuel station, we're adding a one, so it'd be C one.
Okay.
So you can't have it in five hundred feet of water.
So, does that mean it is conditional if the E O Z is in a resource protection zone? I don't think that's appropriate. Oh, no, it's blank, so you can't have it anyplace else, that's why there isn't, that, never mind.
Yes.
Yep, never mind.
And then wild harvesting of crops got Ps almost across the board because.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, timber harvesting.
Shouldn't we give harvesting of wild crops and grasses across the board?
I, I, I assumed it would get the same respect that timber harvesting got, which is much more invasive and.
Perfect, well, I agree.
Timber harvesting in our old one was Ps.
Any.
For flood hazard zone.
No, no.
Still Ps.
Harvesting wild crops. So if you wanna go hay your field, you can probably do that anywhere, is my thought. Home daycare. We have a definition for home daycare?
Yeah, there is a definition for it.
Permitted everywhere except, uh, H C V and H V, but you can't have a house there anyway.
That's what I think we were trying to match up with.
And you can't have it in a flood zone, so your kids can't float away.
Kids are going swimming.
Homeout allowed everywhere.
So we shouldn't allow it in zones that.
Why is it not allowed in E O Z?
I brought that up already, I already brought it up, it just didn't get changed, it was on the list, everybody's saying it was on the list. And I just remember.
It does, if it's available everywhere, it doesn't need to be in E O Z, because.
You would think that, but there's different, different code officers have interpreted it different ways, so we're trying to make it abundantly clear that home occupations are allowed. So. In every zone.
If you leave that out, a new code enforcement officer will say, well, you can have it in R R two, but over, the overlay zone takes precedence, and it's not allowed there.
So we're just trying to make it.
Cause you can have a business in our E O Z, that takes precedence over the underlying zone. So we, we better put it in there, so nobody has any funny ideas, still funny business.
Harvesting of wild crops, you're not gonna do that in the overlay zone too?
Yeah, I had a P there, oh, okay, across the board.
Harvesting of wild crops will go the same as timber harvesting did, timber harvesting got Ps, harvesting of wild crops will get Ps.
Do we have timber harvesting here in someone?
Home occupation is, there's Ps here, but there's not housing allowed there, right?
What do you mean?
Which one?
For home occupation, you've got a P in the little forty or.
Yeah, I just, oh, there's. Scrivener is Heather, take out that nine and C nine, that's not right.
C nine, and healthcare facility?
Yep.
The nine's getting removed. The N H V forty, do we want healthcare facilities there?
Yeah.
Conditional. Horticulture, including retail sales?
Not sure that, okay, so horticulture is, so agriculture is few, uh, any product that is food, feed, fur, or.
Well done.
There's one other one, I can't remember the fourth one, um, horticulture is roses.
Plants, flowers, trees, shrubs, and ornamental plant products.
So there.
Like ornamental versus consumption?
What's that on?
Like ornamental versus consumption?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta ask about healthcare facility.
Sure.
The one-acre North Hollis Village.
Um, my, my thought on that was, like, the quick cares you see in Westbrook.
Well, I mean, we don't have anything there, could be a rehabilitation facility.
Oh, oh, you're saying, you missed it.
We don't allow a single-family home, so how could you even do that? Yep, agreed.
Alright, which one?
And, uh, H C V forty? It's gonna be a conditional, nothing, and the N H V forty, is that what you're talking about?
Wait, why would we?
You don't want a healthcare facility in the village zone?
Yeah, of course we do.
Thought you said, that's the one we shouldn't have.
No, Butch is talking about adding, are you talking about adding a C to N H V forty?
I am.
Yep.
Oh, already wrote that in.
Okay.
Butch doesn't know what you wrote.
I thought we talked about that.
Are there any horticulture?
Going quick, I guess.
Are there any, so, you know, farming, uh, agriculture is allowed everywhere, very similar to, um, well, actually it's not, but. So horticulture, we're allowing horticulture in H C V eighty, but we don't allow agriculture. Same with.
I believe we carried it over from the previous table. That is, from the looks of it, the, the six is not the seven, but it was a six before for, um, R P under horticulture, was P six. Just a refresher.
For horticulture?
For horticulture.
Oh, yeah, it's here, P seven, oh, yeah.
Yep, the six was no farm residents allowed in the flood hazard zone.
Yep.
I think we're gonna try to add it into the E O Z zone.
Yep, it's conditional.
So dwelling, single-family, we changed that to permitted, so that's, I assume why the six left.
We just left them out of clusters.
So we allow agriculture, starting at West Buxton Village, and we allow it all the way through North Hollis Resource C. I don't know why C, but we allow it in all those places, if you look at horticulture, we allow it in H C V eighty. We, and then, we don't, you know, then in R R two, we don't allow it, so it's inconsistent with agriculture, is there a good reason why it's inconsistent?
Well, we.
Is it cause of the retail part?
No, cause, uh, farm stand.
Well, farm stand has no use.
Yep.
Whereas agriculture is not gonna be retail.
Well, agriculture is much more invasive than horticulture.
Well, less foot traffic and less people.
You're still using water, you're still using dirt, you're still using.
And you're including retail sales.
Retail sales of the horticulture, so.
Right.
Uh, farm, uh, uh, Uncle Smarts, no, that's not the right.
So like, I agree we shouldn't have them in cluster.
Yep.
But maybe the N H V should have it.
So we have agriculture in cluster.
Then there's a reason for that. I have to go back and look to what that was.
Are you saying that the, that growing roses is less invasive than?
I'm saying it's the same.
That's what.
I'm saying it's the same as growing corn.
I would argue the same or less than agricultural activities, cause this is agriculture, keeping or maintenance of crops, plants, and or animals, so having cows.
Horticulture, you probably want closer to people versus the agriculture, right?
It's not, I don't know that it's a.
Like, I'm picturing greenhouses where people are popping by versus someone's like private farmland.
Yeah, it's just more of a invasive thing, which ones?
Like land intensive?
I feel like horticulture is less invasive and less disturbing.
So, why wouldn't we allow it?
No, I agree, we're, I think we're arguing the exact same point.
Yeah, horticulture should be allowed more than agriculture.
At, at the very least, the same.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna add it to R R two cluster as a permitted?
I think conditional and cluster, I mean, that's.
Why is growing roses in a greenhouse?
Cause I think you wanna check the retail end of things, right? That's what, or.
In a cluster subdivision, that's pretty tight.
But I can have cows and sell cows?
That's also where I said, I don't think we should have them in a cluster.
We do have agriculture in cluster.
Yeah.
I don't think we should.
Okay, are we in agreement? I agree.
Agricultural, I don't, I agree that agricultural, selling of cows should not be in cluster subdivision.
Yeah, so let's take them out of cluster.
Okay, so what about in H C V, what about in the village districts?
I'm okay with that.
You want them there, or you don't?
I wanna allow it.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's adding.
You wanna add them as a condition?
Permitted.
Permitted for agriculture and horticulture.
Permitted for horticulture.
Horticulture in the village zone.
Yeah, so you could have a greenhouse in the village zone.
Alright, I gotta ask this question.
Of course.
We got a R R two zone, we got a R R two clusters, do we have a separate zone? A two-acre zone that allows only cluster?
No.
Or do we allow cluster in a two-acre zone?
We allow clusters in a two-acre zone, but you've gotta meet that, um, the.
Uh, space and bulk.
Space and bulk, so that's why it's in here, I didn't like the way, I didn't like it, how it's in here, personally.
It seems to me confusing to list, uh, a zone, um, with cluster, I mean.
I think it's a much.
Do we have an R three forty zone?
Yeah, if you have a cluster subdivision, then you're in an R three forty, it, these are not zones.
Right.
That's what it is.
It, it, it makes you think that it's its own zone, but it's not, it's just.
The cluster in R R three.
Exactly.
Which then I think it shouldn't be in the use table like that, because that just gets it confusing.
That's a huge conversation, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right, and it is nine fifteen.
Alright, we have.
We got a couple left, we're almost done.
Alright, I'll let it go.
Uh, industrial use, we just cleaned up some other use, other, other uses. In motel hotel, we took that from before.
Industrial use with outside sales or storage, did we take that out? And it's just all now industrial use?
Yeah.
It's not permitted anywhere, so I guess it is, huh?
Well, we've just.
We're deleting it because we're not delineating from inside and outside sales.
Okay.
Does warehouse fall under that?
Nope.
Warehouse has its own use.
Does warehouse swallow that?
Oh, I see it, gotcha.
Um, kennels, that's, um.
In motel hotel.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Liquor manufacturing, we kinda allowed in a lot of places except for cluster subdivisions and subdivisions.
Makes sense.
Okay, if we don't allow kennels in the Hollis Center Village forty and eighty, and North Hollis Village forty and one sixty, why do we allow it in the West Buxton Village eighty K?
Up for debate?
It's less dense out there, right?
So we should add it in the H Z V eighty?
Or R R two at least.
And the N H V one sixty?
We should do, I think we should go over the definition, the comp plan, and what the comp plan says about these things, and then align. Like, so then we could come to a conclusion where we say, oh, yeah, it makes sense that these types of businesses, then we just fill this in.
Butch is finished, and then we'll review that.
Yep, yep.
And then we'll adjust the definitions.
Yep, that makes sense.
So what are we doing there with kennels?
We're adding Cs.
Adding Cs to the eighty and one sixty, and the H C V and N H V.
And not the forty.
You probably don't wanna kettle in a one acre.
No.[1591.38]
Uh, liquor manufacturing, we have pretty much everywhere except R P, you know, subdivisions. Marinas, we just exclude, you know, took out the boats and put those in different use.
It's in, yeah, it's in the definition of marina, these other.
So mixed commercial use, we allow, that's a new definition.
Did you take out mineral extraction completely?
No, it's still there.
Okay, got it.
Uh, mixed commercial use, we just changed the wording.
Got it.
Mixed commercial use, we're allowing in a lot of places. Hopefully we can get some mixed use buildings. Uh. And then the mixed commercial use deletions, those are just, uh, cleaning up. Nursing home is now senior housing, elderly house, what, senior housing?
Senior.
Senior housing. Uh, orchard, agriculture processing thing is now umbrella.
You didn't, you missed the senior housing and Finn.
Not there yet. That's next page.
You just said. Do you not, do you not just say senior housing?
I said nursing home is now.
Ah, sorry, apologize, go ahead.
No, sorry, it's late night, I apologize. Outdoor recreation is now just, um.
Recreation facility?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't, didn't cut it down by outdoor or indoor because.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Which one of the last pages?
Okay.
Uh. Police and fire, we've kinda combined those from personal. Those are other uses before. Um.
And you need to add it to E O Z?
It's that police and fire?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm not sure, it was, it was there.
So we're gonna permit that, but we conditioned, uh, schools?
No, I think ten was something that applies to new structures and new development only, so.
No, she, she's saying we wanna allow police and fire, but we don't wanna.
We made conditional schools, but we just permit police and fire protection facilities.
Right.
What's the six next to P U Ds?
Six, I guess.
Limited to resort recreational businesses.
No farm residents allowed in the flood hazards.
Nope, you're, you've got the old one, you've got the new one.
Six is limited to resort, recreational business, commercial.
I, we did not make that up, that was in, that's in our use, in current, it's, I think it's number one in current.
I just have numbers backwards then.
But it didn't make a lot of sense to me because I, resort, recreational, business, commercial.
Can they be residential?
Pardon?
Can they be residential?
Yeah, planned unit development is.
Oh, yeah, you got.
I think it's in the definition of planned unit development. It says residential and mixed. But we can, I mean, I think we gotta relook at this and just make sure that it's, I didn't like the definition. We don't have bar, food service, commercial, like, the only one of these terms here is commercial, that's the only one that we have defined. Everything else is left to interpretation.
Yep.
I don't know what resort is.
Okay.
So I think we gotta, we gotta come back to that, um, but it's only used in, I think, the, um, planned unit development.
Okay. So get to the last page, guys. Uh, personal services, that's now professional office, those are combined. Public facility, um, that was new, cause that was part of community center before.
Uh, public, uh, double.
Yep. Recreational facility had indoor and outdoor, we kinda put it as one. Retail store, we took, there was different size requirements, we combined that into one. Rooming houses, that had different size requirements. Residents, single family, multi, that's now dwelling, single family, multi. Senior housing, that was.
I see that elderly.
You don't wanna have a store anyplace but the village.
That you can't have a C in E O Z?
A what?
For senior housing?
No, it was, I already brought it up, it was, it was a mistake. It just didn't get put in.
So there will be a C?
Yeah, and there should be Cs in most things for senior housing.
I care about geezers.
Hey, we all do.
Absolutely.
Retail stores?
Yep.
Only in the village zone.
And E O Z.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much how it was before.
Probably so. I keep, I keep missing that E O Z stuff.
Yep.
It was just mixed between whether it was permitted or conditional, we just turned them all conditional.
And then last change. Solar farm.
We didn't have it in the use table at all, right?
It was not in the use table at all before, but we had a, we had a performance standard for it, so we had to come in.
Do we want that in E O Z?
Nah, I would not think so. Do you?
I don't, do you want it in Hollis, do you want it in Hollis Center Village?
I mean, it doesn't talk about size.
Two acre zone in Hollis, is it two acre, eighty?
Yeah.
So two acre zone in Hollis Center Village.
You could own, you could own one more in two acres.
Right, no, of course, is.
Do we wanna have a solar farm on two oh two, Route thirty five?
Maybe.
I guess, I think there was one planned for that area.
I mean, I, I mean, two oh two and thirty five are E O Z.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I mean, anything, I mean, I, again, I look at E O Z as being pretty much.
I don't think solar farms are economic. We don't bring economy to the area.
That is, I say, a point of view is business development.
I think that we don't want a solar farm in that area.
In the E O Z?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think.
You don't want that?
That takes up prime real estate.
I hate driving through Waterboro, seeing that solar panels right there beside the room.
I think it goes against the whole purpose of the E O Z.
Goes against the comp plan, that's for sure.
I'll take that.
All right. Now we all have some research to go back.
Uh, timber harvest, timber harvest.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We got, it, it's permitted in resource protection and it's got a seven, and seven has to do with the farm.
Yes, so. The seven doesn't need to be there?
I don't think so.
And I'm not sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back through and, uh, that's in flood hazards zone, but, oh, no, wait.
No, it's a resource protection.
But which one are we talking about?
Timber harvest.
Got it.
He's seven.
Oh, got it, so.
So get rid of the sevens, they're saying?
But keep.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it's timber harvest, it's a farm.
Yep, agreed. All right, so a little bit, a lot more work on this, which doesn't surprise me, this is the first, this is the first step we've taken at this, so that doesn't surprise me. I'm going to clean it up in that you're not gonna see as much red, um, I'm gonna. So anything that's in gray right now, those are all things we're removing, I'm just gonna take those out for the next version, so they don't, we don't get distracted by them.
No.
And, um, I'll clean up, I've circled a lot of different, um, things, you know, I, I, that's my bad, I didn't, so. In the old use table, item number four was follow the ordinance. Whoa, we don't need to say follow the ordinance, cause we gotta follow the ordinances. So that's why you're seeing all these fours that I just never crossed out, because I just, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of C's and Ps.
So I think we just got through eighty-five percent of the changes.
Yep.
The performance standards, a lot of us just clean up.
Okay, uh.
But we are gonna stop for the evening.
I understand that.
Yep.
We are working over the zoning ordinance.
Yep.
I, and we, we were getting tied up on growth ordinance before.
Yep.
And I wrote up growth ordinance.
Yep.
And I submitted it.
We have it.
Okay, where, I mean, that's like section nine, I think, in the zoning ordinance, it's where, I think it's the way everybody was leaning, I'm not sure.
Uh, to put it in section nine?
Yeah, I think, section nine is section seven, something like.
Uh, section, so we don't have, oh, add it as section nine?
Yeah.
So I was looking at it as its own separate, but that's.
Like a subdivision thing?
Yeah, not like subdivision, cause those are regulations, not ordinances, but like, uh, shoreline zoning.
Right.
Or, yeah, like shoreline zoning, so that's how, so I was thinking of it as its own separate.
Okay.
That way it could.
Is that okay?
Be changed.
Are you okay?
That way it could be changed as needed if we had.
I mean, I mean, it's just a, the, look. I think all the ordinances should be in one code, but that's, that's a, for a different time, so I, so more along the lines of what you and I were talking about. Where all the ordinances are in one document in articles.
Yeah, but you got a massive, you got a massive book if you do that.
Hey, public facilities are allowed anyway.
Very easy to, it's very easy to make your comparisons when you're doing it on a computer.
So we're actually having a company do that right now, so we have probably ten ordinances that we currently have that are so outdated and so bad, that we have to update them for this next.
Much like our zoning ordinance.
Uh, no, I think I, I know the ordinances she's talking about there.
They didn't have a lot of, they, um, they had a first review and they sent it to us to review. And the zoning ordinance had just minor little things. I can send you a copy.
Yeah, I, I, I think this ordinance change.
Yes.
Is going to be a.
Like in the flood zone too?
Business driving a change that's gonna impact Hollis.
And so what, what that will happen when you update it is, then they'll update this whole codified.
Yeah.
And then you'll be able to pull it up online.
Pull it up online, search it in separate sections, it's, I, I think I know the company, I think I know which company.
Oh, you know, Mina code or whatever?
I'm not sure the name of it, but I mean, most municipalities, it looks exactly the same.
I don't love it.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's really, it's really cool when you look at it.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's exciting compared to what we have now, which is like unsearchable PDFs.
Every now, we're taking PDFs off the website, converting them to Word and trying to work with that. It's very tedious.
On personal computers, like on your own stuff, on your own time, with your own money, with your own budget.
Yeah.
Not for the budget.
But this is, this, this, that's awesome, Mary, thank you for sharing that, sharing that with us, that's really exciting.
We've done the first review, now we're doing the ordinance updates, so we can get them in the next review. And so then the zoning, if we get it on the June, will be on the next review.
Awesome, we do intend to get it on the.
And then they check it for whether it's state and federal compliant with whatever rules, they scratch out things that you can't do anymore.
Wow, they're impressive.
All right, so, um, everybody looked through the performance standards for next meeting. Heather's gun, Heather's, unless you send it to me as well, gonna clean up the use table. Fix up anything that we talked about tonight. So next meeting, we can, we can go through the performance standards, hopefully everybody has comments prior to. Um, we spent a lot of time, hopefully you guys agree with what we're trying to do here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've been talking about it for a year and a half now, so kinda had a pretty good idea what everybody thought. Um, so next meeting, so Mary, we have some public comment time if you would like to discuss? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, uh, planning for next meeting, so.
They've all gone to bed.
Old business, um.
If either of those projects comes in.
So Heidi, um, if either of those projects come in as applications, we'll move those to old business.
Okay.
Um, I would say if they don't have anything by Wednesday, we will push them to the meeting after.
A week from today.
A week from today. I think, uh, that seems reasonable. Yep.
Do we have a, I mean, I think we have a standard.
Can you check to see if we have a standard?
It's two.
We do, it's two weeks.
It's two weeks?
It is two weeks.
Okay, so in that case, I say we push them if they don't have anything in today. We push them the next meeting, not, not, uh.
The twenty sixth. Twelfth and the twenty fourth, right?
Due to what we're trying to accomplish, I, I think.
The twenty sixth.
Correct.
Yeah.
Cause you guys are the nineteenth, right? But, you guys are voting on the nineteenth? So we will be able to get to you, our next meeting is the twelfth?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we just have to have everything in by the second of April.
The second of April? So actually gives us two meetings before then.
Yeah, but we can't make wholesale changes and just drop them in their lap for April, like we gotta give them a little bit of time.
We have to have public hearing, don't we?
So we tend, we don't actually.
We don't, with the public hearings we just did, we didn't have to do, we could, they have, one has to be within thirty days, one has to be within sixty days of the vote. So that's one of the things that we're looking to.
That's what they're changing, so we can get it clarified.
So right now, the select board have to sign the warrant, like hundred and twenty day, hundred and twenty days before the, before the thing. So that means we have to have, have the, our articles to them prior to that.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have to have the final articles to the town clerk by the tenth of April.
And you guys have a public hearing requirement, correct?
But we'll have public hearings about the warrant itself, who's reviewing.
Is it in our? Is it in our ordinances? You're required to have that? Like, I'm just trying to.
No, we're not required, we can just.
So we're required to have public hearings, but.
We're, we're required to have two public hearings, one within thirty days and one within sixty days of the public, of the vote. Which at that point, the ballots are already written, we can't change it.
Public comment doesn't.
It doesn't make any sense.
And absentee ballots, ballots have already been.
To have that, yeah.
So we're getting rid of that and saying we just have to have two anytime.
Yeah, we, we can pick.
To anytime.
Okay.
Hmm.
So with how it's written, we can, as long as we get to them before April second, theoretically, April second, ideally before.
March, whatever our last meeting is.
Yeah, so, so you guys have our bulk already, we're not, we're not shifting off what we have here in drastic measure.
No.
So if you guys can review, you know, start reviewing that.
I only think, like the affordable housing, that one's you guys are well aware of, obviously you very well know the floodplain management, because you're the one that did the red lines for it.
And the definitions, we've already had, you've had that for a month or so. So the rest is.
Changes.
Yeah. Um, so, that being said, I think we don't wanna, with the two week notice, Heidi, if they don't have anything today, we push them off to the twenty sixth. Uh, just cause of what we're trying to get done, I think that's pretty reasonable.
I mean, I like triple, I'll confirm that, but I'm like almost positive.
If that's different, let us.
That would give us more time to review the applications too.
Yep, that'd be great.
Cause I, I didn't know about the solar one, but, yeah.
That's just a sketch plan.
She emailed me that this morning.
She didn't provide, that wasn't an application, that was her sketch plan.
Yeah.
So there's nothing to.
Yeah, nothing to look at, yeah.
All right, so anyway, old, I, I know, old business, um, and then we'll. Only old business is gonna be use table definitions and performance standards. New business is anything new that comes in. Check what the timeline requirements are, and we'll stick to those pretty strict on this go around.
Yep.
And that's all we'll do.
Okay.
Um. We are not having a workshop tonight because everything. Everything that's in the workshop is in what we're doing.
And it's also nine thirty, and you, you know.
So all those things, so next meeting, no workshop, it's all.
Okay.
Just all stuck.
Yep.
Yeah, until we go up to the warning.
Yep.
Next meeting, we'll have to do, we wanted to do our votes again.
We can.
Well, we've never said recommend or not.
Um.
Well.
And they gotta know we recommend.
Let's send this to the last meeting.
I'll send Ben the, the three that you've been, had your public hearing on, for him to write the warrant article.
Perfect.
Um, don't send, no, just two, because the zoning ordinances, the definitions are in this, yeah, they're in this, so we'll just do it all as one.
The definitions are in.
But it will be, I mean, he can write it, it will say, make these changes to the zoning ordinance, whatever, you know.
I'll just ask him to write them.
Perfect.
If you wanna send them our draft changes to, that'd be great, kind of preemptive due to that.
Are we asking him to read them? Oh, okay, well then.
All right.
Lucky guy.
All right, with that being said, we have our next meeting planned, looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to get my package.
What package?
Before I come to the meeting.
Oh, you wanna get your, uh, yeah, the packet?
I can come and get it.
It's just usually the last minute.
Yeah, I always last minute, and it shouldn't be last minute, we're gonna have a day or two to take a look.
We are working on that.
We got a fourteen day requirement for people to submit something to us. I'd just like to have, you know, I come in tonight and this is hanging over the thing, and I know it just came in. And this, the subdivision, I wouldn't over the code offs today, and it was there, and I took a look at it, the map. But, uh, so, you know, the sooner I can have a package, the better, I like it.
So it has to go through making sure that it's complete, isn't that right? Like, doesn't it, it goes through, like subdivision, application comes in.
Are you talking about, are you talking?
He's talking about the packet that we got tonight.
Changes?
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm talking about this, this week I'm in here, and we, and we got this, I like to have this a couple of days ahead of time.
So at times, it's still being filled in, that's, that's what I, I.
So we, we had, we did have the ordinance changes about a week and a half ago.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that was the hope, was to get bits and P, as much as we can in advance.
I'm just saying.
Yep.
If a package is ready, I'll come down and pick it up.
Perfect.
I agree. Um, you have Heidi's email?
I imagine I do.
So if you wanna email, if you guys can email.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I put the packet together yesterday.
We'll get it to you as soon as we can.
You know.
And Heather's gonna run out of here if we don't have a second.
I gotta go.
Second.
Sorry.
So, uh.
Oh, as a favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate it.